Order of the agenda, and the first item is the discussion of Town 15 property.
Excellent, so the faster we get done, the quicker we can leave.
Alright, so where we left the public hearing last week, we tabled the item. And first kind of condition that the council wanted was appraisal of the property. And then.
It should take about four to five weeks.
One of the, one of the thoughts that I had on the appraisal is, I'm assuming that it is getting appraised based on its current zoning. I think, I think.
I mean, if we're looking for what we can sell it for.
Right, but I guess the question is, would it be possible to get an appraisal? That is based on its current zoning and then alternatively, like if it were rezoned to allow like residential, for example.
Uh, we can ask, yeah.
Is that something that they could look at as well?
I'm not sure, but we'll ask.
So like, get like a, an RM or an RL zone appraisal and then also the current commercial zoning appraisal.
We'll ask, yes.
Okay, and then in terms of the other items that we were talking about. Everybody feel free to chime in, but so there was, at least with regards to, I think like this Zaharis property, there was. And Mike was interested in kind of understanding, not necessarily the full scope of the comp plan update. Being completed, but something kind of lesser than that, so I wanted to just kind of get clarification on what additional direction staff received and, and/or needs from us. Just so we were clear as to like what the deliverables are going to be before we can have the discussion untabled.
Yeah, so what, similar to what you saw in the cover memo, there, we have a couple scenarios in there, those will be planned out there for all the properties, the vacant properties.
Okay.
And that will show impacts, lost revenue, if none of those properties were involved.
How are you going to adjust for like at least one of the 76-year properties that has a pending application, we're just going to put an asterisk next to it?
Uh, well, we do budget impacts for, for an application of that, so.
I'm trying to find where those scenarios are.
We would do scenarios based on what we're recommending for all the other opportunity areas. Or not recommending, but what are, what's proposed in like the, the opportunity areas that are out for public comment currently.
Yeah, because like Zaharis is zoned RAC and the applicants historically wanted it zoned residential, so how do you?
So we would, we would have two, two scenarios or three scenarios, the first one would be keeping zoning current.
Current zoning.
And then the other would be the, what is in the opportunity areas that are out for public review right now, which is like a medium density residential with a small amount of mixed use, kind of like scenario two for Town 15. Looks like, it has like density housing plus a small amount of commercial space.
Yeah, which in this case, we actually had a concept plan for Zaharis that basically fit that bill perfectly.
Correct, yeah, yeah, so we would, that's part of how we came up with those scenarios, of those recommendations slash proposed uses.
Concepts.
Concepts.
Is, is, I'm sorry, is this in the packet for tonight?
No.
So what memo are we talking about?
June 10th memo.
Yeah.
The memo that was included in the rezoning applications I was talking about, okay.
Sorry, sorry.
I was just looking forward to today's, tonight's package, I didn't see it.
The cover memo that I wrote for Town 15 had three scenarios. One for like a low density housing, one for a medium density housing with some commercial, and then one for like the proposed open space use, but for these other opportunity areas, we'll base one of the scenarios on their current zoning. And then offer scenarios based on the concepts that have been presented for the conference.
Okay, one thing that was missing, at least with those, going back to Town 15, there's scenario one, two, scenario three, the open space, there's no revenues, but there's a cost. Right, like, you know, and we had some of that in the Pro's master plan in terms of the operating costs, and if we turn this to, again, I get it, there's like 19,000 scenarios here. But if we go down the path of open space rec, and we go down the path of developing it, there's a cost to the town. So it'd be good to kind of just, you know, even not invent anything new, because I think the, the guys in 2021 when they put the Pro's master plan together, they had conceptualized that this might cost X to operate.
Right.
And Renee, on residential low density, what does that look like?
What do you mean?
What type of housing, is that just like market rate housing?
Like, single unit housing, essentially what we consider low den, uh, low density residential.
Is there any way to look at a different typology for them? Nick, how much can we talk about this right now?
I would prefer you limit your discussion to what you need staff to come back with.
Okay.
To discuss, so, I think you guys are still there, you're starting to get a little bit away from it. If you would like to direct Renee to bring back a low rent density residential, whatever, be fine, but we don't need to discuss the merits of it, I don't think.
No, I don't want to talk about the merits of anything related to this, I was just curious because, you know, one of the issues, market rate is not something that anybody wants to see there. But there is a different typology of market rate, and if I can get in a lot of trouble tonight, I apologize, but you know, one of the typologies we have not talked about is 55 and up senior living, which is something that our town is running into a desperate, desperate need for. Because we've got a lot of people who are the original residents of Rock Creek, who moved here in the late eighties and nineties, who are aging out of their homes. And those Rock Creek homes are no longer aging place, they move, uh, residences, there's no way you can go up and down staircases. So is there an opportunity, Renee, to take a look at something which could be residential low density, but specifically something in terms of deep restricted 55 and up, where it would be single story only, like 18 foot maximum height, 1,200 to 18 square feet. That way it doesn't comp at all towards the residences, and that way the neighbors wouldn't feel like they're getting a, a lower type of market value or they're losing market value share to a higher market rate neither, but is that fair to me?
Get away from fair a little bit.
Sharon, talk about uses.
I would say that I can, that we can look at things for like an RL, because that's low density residential. What you're talking about would still be low density residential.
Yeah.
You talk about the zoning, not about the uses, because the uses, you can't zone for uses.
Yeah, yeah. But something like a 55 up, that would be restricted to only a certain.
Relevant for zoning.
Yeah.
So it doesn't, so, I mean, you could, like Renee is saying, there's a million things you can do in RL, and that's one of them. But this is a rezoning, so the conversation is limited to RL.
So we open ballparking in that discussion.
Yes, yes. In terms of asks, like for, for staff, because it's going to take a little while to get the appraisal. For me, it's really important that we get Park to weigh in, and there's some history here, because I was on Park or OSAC when they put the joint statement together on what to do with Town 15. And it took them 18 months to do that, and you know, it sort of said, number one, town shall not sell any portion of Town 15 for development, ensure maximum joint of current and future superior residence. Number two, OSAC and Prostat agree that careful attention must be paid to Town 15, and that the Pro's master plan is a valuable route to evaluate this parcel's continual optimal use. Town 15, three, should be part of a public use recreation and wildlife quarter, which extends from Autry Park to Colton Trail. Right, so the two organizations did this, then we spent $65,000 on the master plan, and now OSAC's got a very different view of what we should do. So I want to hear from Park, what we'd like to do, because, you know, two different committees disagreeing on what to do, which is fine, but we did spend, you know, $65,000 on that master plan, an inordinate amount of community feedback and everything else, and to have only one of the committees come back and say, we want you to maybe do this. And the issue is, of course, our Park committee is very busy with looking at the pools, looking at the, the community park, and now we're going to ask them, you know, what would you like to see at Town 15? Because, you know, one of the, you know, there's open space natural, open space rec, very different in terms of what you can and can't do, we're not getting all the voices. So I want to make sure we get all the voices in as part of this discussion, and for me, Park is a critical voice.
I've got an updated version, so Leslie had Park weigh in on Town 15 like six months ago. And that was the last time they talked about it, and so it's on our list to talk to Park.
Yeah, and I think.
So I'll get an updated version of what their vision for Town 15 is.
Perfect, yeah, I think it's really important to me, because I sat and I watched Park and it was Prostat at the time, OSAC hash out this joint statement, which was very difficult to do. And if we deviated from it, I want Park to at least have the opportunity to weigh in on this conversation even.
And well, I mean, there's maintenance costs associated with just the property as it is, so.
We start like trying.
When we're talking about all these costs, I'll try and do a more robust discussion on costs.
Yeah, because even open space costs us money, because it goes, have to be paid for. Perfect, now, this was a big one for me, because it didn't seem that that was represented in the memo at all, it was just a lot of what OSAC wanted, again, totally fine. And all the comments were really, there was no one from, from Park, you know, opining on what they wanted to see, and I think that's, you know, sort of part of it.
What is our ETA on finalizing the comp plan and actually getting it considered for approval?
So I would say October, November timeframe for like final approval. You'll see a draft and weigh in probably September, and then we'll bring a final draft to you in October, hopefully. And then if you want changes after that, then it'll be November, and, and then it, on and on until you like it. But yeah, so there'll be like a rough draft that it goes out to like public and everyone for comment, and then we'll bring the next version of the final draft to you, probably in October sometime.
Okay. That's sooner than I was expecting, I was, which is good.
That's our goal, and we're still, we're still on course for it, so.
We did the budget in October, so it's in November.
Right.
I don't look at the actual calendar of your meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I guess my, my, my thought on kind of where we are with this discussion is I want us to be clear on, you know, what the, the deliverables are that are necessary for us to put this back on the agenda for consideration. If there is like work product that can be considered when we do that, like because the comp plan, at least on this, like I don't want to ignore the comp plan if it's ready. But I don't want to necessarily like delay this just for the comp plan. If the comp plan is going to be like a year out or something like that, then it doesn't seem like it makes sense. But if, if we're actually looking at like getting a draft in Oc, in October, I mean, it's, it's almost July, and you know, before we know it, like I mean, I would imagine that the, we could consider kind of like the analysis and the thoughts on this parcel. Kind of like that would be incorporated into the comp plan, even if the rest of the comp plan isn't done, like that, that, this section may be kind of baked and ready to go, right? Like based on, I mean, I don't know that necessarily as, as a fact, but if it is, it seems like we could consider it. But if it's not, and it's going to delay us a year, then, you know, that's, that's something for us to, to keep in mind as well, so. Thoughts on when that portion of the comp plan will be ready?
We'll have drafts.
Not withstanding anything else in October?
And so it's based on public comment on the drafts, right? So right now, we have concept, I, you know, proposed for input, and then we'll take all of that input and we'll create a draft. And then people will comment on that draft, and maybe it changes or maybe it doesn't. You will have a better idea as to whether or not we're on the right track by then. But I don't know what public comment is going to say.
Yeah, I, I guess what I'm trying to kind of wrestle with right now in my head is if an appraisal is going to take, whatever it's going to take, a month. So that pushes us into August, realistically. And then we're going to be doing, I guess, the economic impact scenarios, similar to what's in, in the memo from the June 9th meeting for, we're going to be doing that for what, for Zaharis?
All the vacant properties.
All the vacant properties? How long do we anticipate that's going to take?
Yeah, it's about the same time as the appraisal.
Okay, so, so realistically those deliverables and then getting Park to weigh in? I mean, I imagine that they could, they could weigh in.
They're July 16th meeting.
Okay, so in terms of like the deliverables, we could have the deliverables to us by August, right? And then if the comp plan is going to be done in the October and November timeframe, maybe there's at least components of the comp plan drafts of this parcel that could be provided in that hearing as well, recognizing that they may be drafts and not finalized.
Yeah, I mean, I can, we can provide you with the draft and the comments received at whatever point we're at when we bring you the rest of this stuff. It just won't be, it's not final until all the comments are received and you all have time and input on the final draft, right? So, I, but I, I'm not trying to be vague, I'm just saying. I will give you what we have, whenever we have, whenever I bring the rest of it to you.
Well, what I'm, I'm trying to do is I'm trying to, to move things along, but realistically schedule things, recognizing that there are other things on our agenda. Obviously, the budget comes into the, the fall every year, and so that always occupies a good portion of our time in September and October. I know that we've got a big contract coming down the pike for the pool, and so that, I imagine, is going to be occupying our time in July and August.
Twenty third. We're having sessions on the 23rd.
We have, but that's, that's for the approval of the, of the contract, but then the final actual design is going to be sometime in July.
We'll come back with the.
Or the first meeting in August, because we don't have one meeting in July, so.
Okay, so what else do we have that's on our, kind of like master look ahead, that we should be thinking is going to be occupying a lot of time? Between kind of now and the fall?
Got the zoning application for Guardian, got the budgets.
We're not going to be approving a contract on Rock Creek Parkway?
Doesn't look like it, unfortunately.
Okay, so that freed up some time, unfortunately?
Yeah, I think we have this application, of course. Think there's any other development applications coming in?
The, um, Kai Grouf FDP. That'll be between town, falls.
Then we might have the food hall FDP as well. Okay, those are the big ones.
The Kai Grouf FDP is under review, we sent comments back, so that one's probably going to get scheduled sometime, sooner than later. And the food hall, we expect to get.
So I think realistically, we could, we could have this at the second meeting of August, first meeting in September, realistically.
Yeah, maybe by that time, there really shouldn't be anything outstanding.
And then hopefully by then, we'll be able to incorporate at least the work products that has been done for the comp plan on this parcel. Right?
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else that any members of the council want to be looked at by staff before we're going to put this back on an agenda?
I mentioned this in the last meeting, and I'm pretty sure I already know the answer, and I can't remember if it came from one of the emails we've gotten, or if it's watching OSAC, but we can't use open space funds for open space rec, correct? It has to be open space natural to be reimbursed, or is that not the case, or do we not know yet, which is fine?
If we put Park committees of, come out in general fund.
And then the secondary question would be if part of Town 15 is going to be open space natural essentially, and then park-like things in another area of Town 15, would we be able to carve out a portion of that to be reimbursed from the open space funds for the portion that is truly open space? Okay.
To that end, we also have a, where are we now with the open space budget in terms of the debt for Coyote Ridge? And the schedule for that repayment and what we've gotten funded, what we're anticipating to have funded.
Yeah.
You know, for the next one to five years.
And then Councilmember Miller's suggestion, you know, in that sort of hybrid environment where there is a wildlife quarter, what's the size? Because I think OSAC at one point had defined what a quarter would look like, you know, because it's 15 acres, is the, is a quarter five acres, four acres? There's something floating around.
We can work, I mean, we would have, we would want to re, to subdivide the lots, so that we would separate the.
Because right now, we're just here on one line.
No, exactly, but if we go down that path, which I think is, is a good direction to kind of at least look at, you, what does that fuzzy black line look like that subdivides the lots? In terms of acreage.
In our Home Roll Charter, so we've got a new provision there about open space that says that if we want to make some use of open space, that wouldn't be open space, that would require it gone to the voters.
Yeah.
Does that apply to open space rec?
That becomes more open space.
Or open space natural, or both?
The charter does not specify between the two, it just says open space. And it also says, I'm looking for language right now, it makes really short sentences.
Yeah.
It says something along the, as I pull it up here, it says something along the lines of if you want to rezon to a denser development. So I think if we, right now, the application is for open space rec, so that's pretty clear that more dense would be out of open space. I think if it were zoned open space natural, that would create some discussion, but I don't necessarily want to give a legal opinion on here, right here, right now. But would be an interesting question about the, the charter itself, where is, is rezoning of open space to a zoning designation that permits more dense development than an open space or similar zone designation? So I think it's ambiguous, I think it's ambiguous about, well, if it's more dense development than open space, but open space rec is, is that more dense than an open space natural? That would be the question.
I mean, it would have to be, right?
Yeah.
You've got structures or improvements.
But it says to, that then an open space or similar zone designation. Yeah, it's up there.
Potential.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Good job.
Of your charter, of your whole world charter. That was a yes.
Yeah.
But right now, I mean, like I said, right now, the application is, the application is rec, so I think it's not all about the question right now.
And in terms of the, the direction that, that we have as quasi judicial decision makers on this, your, your direction is this is tabled, but it's still a pending application, so we're not discussing this publicly with community members, we're not.
Yeah, I would treat it as if.
We're staying neutral.
More or less as if it did not come about Monday, and you were otherwise waiting for it to be scheduled like any other development application comes through.
Okay.
What's the, I mean, what's the risk here? I mean, because, okay, I know it's a lawyer asking, I'm asking a lawyer about risking suing yourself, he's suing by himself. You lose, so you lose. I guess, I mean, there, there is validity to the community, it could sue the town because they don't think that it was a fair quality judicial process, but I get it now, thank you.
We have due process rights to the public.
Yeah, and to the applicant, I don't think you satisfied for the applicant, but the public has a time to be heard as well, which they'll get.
And then with, with respect to actually like funding it, so there's, there's some question about, you know, we, we own it, obviously we pay for it out of the general fund, and I don't think that there's been any previous example where the town has purchased land out of the general fund that then was converted to open space use. So we're kind of writing the book on, on this one in terms of, I don't think that there's necessarily like a requirement that the open space fund, you know, repays the general fund, it's just kind of like a best practice that we're, maybe.
Specifically, what we've done is guys, when we borrow money from other funds, we reimburse that fund over time with interest.
But generally, the, the flip was very close to when the parcel was purchased.
Yeah.
This one's got the tool, you're, across Boulder County, I feel like this has had to have happened, at least at some point. You were Boulder, potentially had, owned a parcel that they subsequently zoned, open space. There's got to be some precedence in terms of how others have approached this. And a long line is going in the opposite direction, they're trying to take some open space and turn it into residential. That's going over the line.
We're talking about city Boulder County.
Uh, no, I meant to say Longmont, if I said otherwise.
Yeah, Boulder, yeah, you said Boulder.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Longmont, city of Longmont.
But actually, to answer that question, I did look up that a couple of years ago when Echo came here trying to get us through affordable housing. And my, my thing to them was like, you guys just have to, you take some of your open space, turn it into regular land, and you guys can solve it overnight. And there's no precedent at all that Boulder County's ever.
No, no, but this, Longmont's working on this now.
Yeah, yeah, but yeah, I mean, there was the first.
Yeah, so what, what I'm, what I'm looking for, that's kind of more to the side, but you have across. Yeah, so what I'm looking for, that's kind of more to the side, but you have across the history of Boulder, Boulder County, had they owned a parcel of land that they'd then flipped to open space? And if there's a period of time between when they purchased the land and when they flipped it, how do they compensate themselves?
Yeah. No, I'm curious to see that too.
But the opposite direction, almost no one's ever gone off open space towards developed land. Doesn't happen here.
And to my point, once it goes open space, that's it. So be very sure you want it to be open space, because there's no getting it back at that point.
And I think that's what the Home Rule Charter tried to codify, right? Like, they wanted to put in roadblocks to make sure that, you know, it's like a different town council couldn't change it. Because they have different kind of policy that it would have to go to the voters to make that ultimate decision. Which I think is a fair thing to include. And I think reflects like a value that our community has to open space. But, you know, every parcel that you take from potentially developable land to open space, to your point, Jason is, you know, going to compound the housing problem ultimately, right?
One of the questions that came up during the meeting last Monday was just send this to the full voters? We've never done that, other than, you know, tax increases have to be done by the voters because of taper. But is there an opportunity to just not make a decision as a town council? Kick that to community voters?
I would not want to do that, because that sets a precedent.
I agree. I just want to make sure.
We're not even making decisions, we're sending things to the voters that should be, we should be deciding, that's what they elected this morning. I mean.
And the legislature does referred measures, but I don't know why or what the kind of statutory framework is for when they have to do that.
It'd be a referred measure, and I don't know, I'd have to go into the charter and your code to really figure out how that works. But practically, generally, you can refer whatever you want.
Okay.
As a general municipal rule, not as a just specific disfigure. But if we wanted to do that, we would have needed to make that decision, we would need to make that decision by August 18th. Yeah, and I will add, to take back what I just said. I'd especially have to look into it for a land use application. That's pretty strange, that'd be very weird. Like, usually you see it on ordinance, like a standard ordinance, that's like a big deal thing. Like Lafayette did it for immunization of firefighters or police firefighters. That was on the ballot.
Campus.
Yeah. Oh.
We forget how early it was that we had to put something on the ballot because of a mistake and we had to pay for that.
Yeah, no, I mean, if we missed the unified ballot in November, it's $60,000. But if it's part of the unified ballot, it means they have that done by the beginning, middle of August anyways, which I don't.
I don't think anybody's asking for that either.
Oh, no, it's come through.
Like, a handful of people, like three that I can remember. But that does not say that anybody's asking for that by any numbers of what other people are asking for. Like, I wouldn't even put that as a competition of being asked for, because it was floated as an idea by a planning commissioner and then, I think, a couple of emails. So it just, I, that is our, literally our job. So I just never want to give it to a situation where now we're putting it out for the voters to decide about something that we've been put here to do. It's us not doing our job, that's what it is.
And I will add that the application is in front of you guys right now, passing.
Yeah, I also, you know, I agree with you, John. Our job is to make decisions. If you don't want to make difficult decisions, you shouldn't be doing this job, right? You know, and the idea of sending something to the voters this November is an off-cycle election. I don't know what's on our ballot, if anything, I mean.
It's time to do that, but at this point, it's, yeah, we've missed. I just want to at least, again, this is about, you know, what do we want to make sure that having staff bring back questions asked? Let's run through the pros and cons of doing it, because there's a lot of cons given time and everything else. But, you know, I want to dismiss some of my comments just outright because it's too hard or can't do it.
Can we direct planning commission to take a different use of?
Uncommissionary rule on it?
So their, the refreshment, or their uses on it are just RL or?
What do you mean? They do, all, they just, their, their decision was not to support the proposed rezon to open space recreation. They didn't, there was, that is no, there is no other.
So they don't have a recommendation at all from that line?
No.
Because it failed.
Right.
There was like six to two, right? Something like that. They had two commissioners who were in favor of the rezoning application.
You know, like the reasoning behind it has nothing to do with anything other than whether or not they wanted to move, they recommended moving forward with what was for them given. So like, yeah, I wouldn't want to say what their recommendation was beyond just saying that they didn't support the application.
The recommendation was to not be, they did not recommend the application to rezon.
Okay, and they're not.
And that was their role.
And they're not recommending anything from that land then?
Right.
So how would this whole problem come about then?
What do you mean?
I mean, is the planning commission's not recommending anything to this land? And it's sat there as whatever it's been for all this time, there's no applicants, there's nothing on it. We got here hot.
We are the applicant. I asked for it, yeah.
You asked for it.
And I seconded it.
Okay.
And Mike thirded it, sort of.
But I mean, we've got nothing going on in Zarex, we've got nothing going on in Resolute, right? Those are still just owned properties by other people.
You don't own them.
So. I should like wish.
I thought that I shared that at the last meeting. But I did. It was purposeful.
Yeah, so we, you know, we have, I mean, this is really the only time that this has ever happened in the almost 10 years that I've been on the town board and town council. Obviously, you know, the mayor can put things on the agenda, and council members, two council members can put something on an agenda. We just have never had a land use application that has been put on an agenda. Because we're typically not.
We don't own land.
You know, we don't own land. You know, we've done, we've done rezonings in connection with open space acquisitions. Where we have acquired land that was previously residential or commercial, and then rezoned it to open space as a condition to that open space transaction going through. But all of those were usually like joint applications where we were a co-applicant with like Boulder County or. Yeah, exactly.
Or the Conservation Trust.
So this is just kind of like the unique situation of us having control of our own destiny and that we own the land. We've got two or more members who have asked for it to be considered, the planning commission has ruled, made the recommendation, and we tabled it because we wanted additional information. So. In terms of where we go from here, you know, we have the deliverables that we're talking about tonight. But in terms of actually reaching a decision on the merits, we either move forward with the hearing after we get those deliverables and vote yes or no. Or I think alternatively, the only other possibility that I could kind of foresee as something that could change this is if the council members who made the motion to put this on the agenda withdrew their motion. Which I'm not suggesting you're going to do, but I'm just saying that that would be the only way that I would foresee.
Just as any other land use application, we have an applicant. And the applicant can choose to withdraw their application during the process, they no longer feel they can move forward with it. The only difference is the applicant is you guys. So you'll have to decide upon that if you want to do that. And I would do that in a competition. Not here. But I'm not saying you guys are, you guys aren't doing that, but.
Yeah, but I'm just suggesting that like ordinarily, like if you had a situation where you had two council members that got something on an agenda, and if they decided, actually, I don't want to move forward with that, that request, they could withdraw that request and no longer have that item on the agenda. It's a little different here insofar as.
A little more down the road.
Yeah, a little more down the road.
Does it have to be the same two council members? I'm just, because two other people, I mean, we're talking about us as an entity now, basically, as the applicant, so.
The town is the applicant.
Technically.
How interesting. I don't know if there's a difference.
Someone could withdraw.
No, but I mean, like.
Somebody else could be like, yeah, I want to withdraw.
If you and Neil decided, like, you wanted to put something on the agenda for Monday night, and, you know, whatever it is, it's just some item about garbage collection in town.
Well, that reminds me.
Yeah, and then you decided, you know, we're going to withdraw that. It wouldn't be two other members that would be withdrawing it. It would just be, the maker of the motion would be withdrawing the motion to get that placed on the agenda.
I would expect that, I was just making sure that there was, no, making sure all the lanes were discussed.
All right, to button this up, so we've got the appraisal, we've got the economic impact scenarios for the undeveloped parcels. We're going to ask Park to weigh in. And then depending on the timeframe, we're either going to have an actual draft of the comp plan or at a minimum, we're going to have the draft so far of that component of the comp plan for our consideration. We're estimating that we could probably have this on an agenda in the second meeting in August or first meeting in September.
And to be clear, that would be the first hearing. Because we didn't actually have the first hearing on Monday.
We'd renotice it.
Yeah, we would renotice it.
Yeah, the first reading.
Or, yeah, the first reading. The first reading, okay.
This survey went out from the planning commission for the comp plan, right? So is there a deadline for those results?
For the survey, we're going to leave it up for about another week and a half or so.
Okay, so there will be something from that at least for us?
Okay, absolutely.
I heard about that.
So. There's 35 people who have put comments in so far.
Yeah, but then anybody who provided comments in person, those don't get captured in terms of like gross numbers, though, right?
Not yet, they will, I mean, they will. Eventually, we'll have, like, we had, you know, 65 people sign in at the open house. And then, you know, we had more people than that. And some people, you know, voted on some of those things and not others. But we'll calculate, like, how many votes all the things got. And then we'll include all of the comments that we're receiving from the online survey as part of that discussion. So it'll be, because the boards and the survey are like the same information that we're sharing and asking for feedback on. I don't know how they'll like, you know, combine those two things. But the goal is to combine the responses from the survey and the open house responses and comments.
All right, anything further on this item?
Can I just say thank you? Because I was one of those who asked, so I appreciate this conversation and just what's giving direction to staff. But I appreciate it, sir, thank you. Sorry, Nick, you had to come.
It's okay.
Appreciate it.
Always an excuse to see you guys.
Hopefully, we didn't violate any of your legal maxims and.
You did okay, you tried.
How did, did you do the Boulder? Did you do that?
That fireman.
All right, we're on to item two B, which is a discussion of residential lighting standards.
So Renee's put together some information, compares us to other cities, it's just going to go through and then just open up the discussion question.
Yeah, so I don't know how much you want to go through of the cover memo that I submitted for this. But we looked at adjacent jurisdictions that had some form of residential lighting standards. They're not all, you know, like for like by any means. They kind of are all, yes, they are all over the place, exactly. So, you know, trying to make sense of them and put them into categories that could be compared was difficult. And not all jurisdictions have residential lighting standards for like the type of residential that we're talking about. You know, we already have lighting requirements for commercial properties and for apartments. So high density, we don't have a high density, but like for anything other than medium and low density, we already have lighting standards for. So.
And all the PD plans.
Correct, yeah.
Lighting.
Yeah, so really, when we're looking at these lighting standards, we're talking about RL and the RM zone districts, which is original town. And I suppose they could apply to PDs that don't have lighting standards in them. Depending on how we write the code, I don't know. I'd have to ask Nick about how you could apply to, you know, if a PD doesn't speak to an item, then typically, there's a note in there that says, if it's not in here, then you refer to town code for whatever that is. So like Sagamore, if we included a verbiage to, for that, it would probably apply to Sagamore as well. I haven't looked at all the other PDs to know whether or not they have lighting standards or not. So Sagamore's the only one that I can think of off the top of my head that it may apply to. Anyhow, the, there's, there were five kind of general areas that you could consider as part of a residential lighting code. There, what are they? Glare, nuisance, measurement of light, design aesthetic, fixture shielding, and fixture height. I guess there's six, sorry. But generally, glare talks about the brightness. Nuisance talks about how it impacts an adjacent individual or people. Measurement of light talks about candle, what are those called? My brain isn't working.
Spectral response?
Yeah, but like, you take photoelectric, yeah, photometers, photoelectric. You use a, you use a scale, and they measure the level of light at a particular location, typically the property line. And you want, you know, no light past the property line. That doesn't mean that you, obviously, you can see that a light is on, but the ambient lighting around you isn't, isn't measurable. And then, design aesthetic is how it looks, obviously. Fixtures shielding has to do with, a lot of them have to do with more like night sky preservation. So nothing can, you know, angle towards the sky. It has to be facing down or towards the building. And then fixture height had to do with like where on the building that those lighting lights can go and that they can go up also. A lot of them kind of, the sections of code didn't specifically say, you know, design aesthetic and then list what they said. They, they have a whole realm of different areas. And it'd be like transitional zone lighting, and then it would list like a bunch of things. And so we kind of parsed out these six conceptual things to consider if you're going to consider residential lighting standards. So I don't want you to think that if we do a residential lighting code, it's going to have these six sections in it per se. It'll most likely look like, you know, residential lighting standards, you know, in what it applies to. And then they'll talk about some combination of these types of things. But I think for, for what we're hoping for from you is to get an idea of what types of things you would want to see in a code if we were to write a code. And then if we were to do a code, we would look for a consulting firm to write it for us, because I don't understand how to read some of the language in some of these codes.
Our code has something already on lighting. So what do we have currently on the books and what are we lacking? I mean, obviously, I see these suggestions here, but.
Our current code actually is, it, we have lighting standards for commercial buildings. We have lighting standards for signage. And we have lighting, I think those. we have lighting standards for signage, and we have lighting, I think those are like, those are all of what our lighting.
So there's nothing on lighting for residential districts?
No.
Hopefully, we handle those through the PD, but when the PD goes forward, that's how we've been handling them.
Yeah, my, my thought on this, in, in the timing is really interesting, because World Migratory Bird Day was just like a month ago, right? And we got new signs up, and, you know, and one of the things that Excel has done recently is they put all these new streetlights that are straight downcast, so they're brighter, but they're downcast, and there's no light, you know, sort of, whatever the word is, like, light goes everywhere. And in Rock Creek, I'm seeing a lot of people replace their, their scones with LEDs that are just, like, bright. And you go and ask them, they turn it down, right? But it's, but, you know, and I just, to me, with what, Migratory Bird Day, we literally put up new signs, like, on our, like, entrances and exits, you know, like, if we're gonna be a migratory bird, say, if a community, we gotta think truly about downcast. So at least for me, that's one of the more important ones, just to make sure that we don't have birds crashing it. Because I mean, I think right now in the code, I could just shine really, like, I could, like Luxor, I could shine a five thousand lumens light straight to the sky to attract a bunch of bats. There's nothing against it, actually, there's nothing that prohibits me from doing that.
Dark sky code.
We don't have that code.
We don't, we don't follow laws or something like that.
We don't find, I mean, we don't have to. We have our own code, counties get it, whatever.
They have all your bats.
So there's, I mean, there's lights that are downcast lights, there's lights that are dark sky compliant, and then there's, you know, LEDs are, are, because they last longer and take up less electricity, the brightness that you see isn't necessarily a measurable brightness, it's like the color, or, I don't know. So depending on how you want to write the code, you wanna, like, if you, if you wanna talk about, you know, measurement of light crossing a property line.
Would you call it nuisance?
Yeah, so like, there, I assume if you're doing downcasting or dark sky, it won't speak to the type of lighting or where, where it could be, or anything else, like brightness or anything. It's strictly, it can't go up.
But it could go down forever.
Right.
Does Rock Creek HOA have a, a lighting standard?
Not that we could find.
Yeah, they don't have one. I mean, technically, anytime you did anything with your property there, you'd have to go in and ask the HOA for permission, but because there's no standards, it'd be hard pressed to enforce a standard.
On an application basis, they would make a decision on what your lights were, not, wow.
Probably based on, like, design or something.
Who's ever pissed off at you the time it's on the board, it's not connecting your lights.
Yeah, that's why I'm not submitting any applications.
Is there an interest from council to do, to amend code to add?
Well, and I suppose if we're talking about it, like, there's also an aspect of existing lighting versus new lighting, and we don't do permits for, like, changing exterior lighting fixtures, so then we would have to figure out how we implement a new code that we don't do permits for, and at what point is compliance required, and by who.
We don't do code, like, if, you know, there's a lot of things that we're reactive to, right? If we get a complaint about noise, then we can go and check. If we get a complaint about, you know, and this is where you gotta find a way to grandfather in, like, when was the installation put in? But there's gotta be some way that we can enforce some of these things, you know, just on, on a code enforcement basis. Like, I don't think we should be making people pull the permit to replace the scones outside their house.
Scones.
Scones.
Just, you talk about food.
Sorry.
Scones are from Starbucks.
Boulders are dry.
Sconce on your walls.
I mean, that would be my, that, that would be my recommendation.
Yeah.
I just wanted to throw it out there.
No, I, I don't...
There is that other aspect to it.
These other communities, like, do you know how they, are they kind of just doing it on a complaint basis? Or are they making you pull permits for lighting sconces?
I, I actually don't know how they apply their codes. I mean, I would, if they're, if it's a new build, we look at lighting for, but if it's not a new build, then we would have, then, yeah.
I think it would be good to have an expert weigh in, I mean, I think, just on balance, making sure that we're not creating light pollution unnecessarily for just kind of the greater good of, of the entire area. Like, we don't wanna have all of our light shining up into the sky, it's not good for the wildlife, it's not, just, it's not ideal, right? So if we could have somebody who does this sort of work look into it and make recommendations as to the sort of things that we can do to prevent those problems from happening, I'd be open to seeing what their suggestions are. And then, just in general, I think it probably would be a good idea to have some mechanism to be able to, you know, referee any disputes between property owners in an objective way that is measurable and, you know, based on not just like an opinion or subjective belief, but actually based on an objective measurement criteria that people who understand this technology can make recommendations that everybody can live with. Because otherwise, we're gonna be in, in situations where we have, you know, potentially neighbors complaining against neighbors, and we don't have a mechanism to enforce it, we also don't have any objective standards to know whether or not, like, somebody's just being particularly sensitive, or if it's, like, really egregious. And we have, like, a criteria that says, like, no, like, this is the, you know, the amount of lumens that can be visible from the property line versus, you know, you just have somebody who might be, like, very sensitive to, you know, situation. People also get used to things too, I mean, I remember when Excel came in and changed all the lights on our street, like, at first, like, it was like, whoa. They're really, like...
Bright.
Bright, and, and now I don't notice them. But the, the first week, I was just like, wow, that's a big change.
When the color changes, it's noticeable. I swear like that, like, I changed my light in my fixture, and I was like, oh my god, what? That is terrible, but, yeah.
But, you know, in terms of, like, you know, in general, when we have situations where our residents are frustrated, it's where they ask us to do something and we can't do something. But on the flip side of that, we don't wanna just be reactive to somebody, we wanna be fair and equitable and objective and consistent, so to the extent that we can have something that enables us to do something in a, I think, a just manner and a fair way, that's something that I'd be interested in looking at.
Also, how the, how would that work for existing properties? Are they grandfathered in, or are we, if there's complaints, are we now making people switch out light fixtures? I guess it's for, like, new stuff, or?
Well, I mean, considering, I mean, I guess my, my, my thought is, you know, it's, lighting is, is different, right? Because like, the fixture can stay the same, but the bulbs are gonna be changed, you know? So like, you know, what are you grandfathering in? And considering that we don't issue permits, it's, uh, I mean, you could, you could, I think, on most lighting issues, fix it very quickly and cheaply. Not talking about, like, crazy custom lighting fixtures, but if you have, like, your typical sconces or something like that, and you've got, like, super bright bulbs, and they're shining right near neighbor's face, and then if you drop to a little warmer bulb, and all of a sudden, you've got no problem, so.
How does that work for commercial? Because I know we've received complaints from people saying that the commercial buildings are lighting up their house, but I know this go off at a certain time, I'm assuming, because businesses need...
Yeah, well, we already have something on the books with commercial right now, right? So...
So none of that's changing.
Yeah, so this would just be for a residential lighting standard, right?
I think we can have someone who understands how to measure the lighting, take a look, but, you know, like, there's also, if someone complains about their neighbor's lighting, and they don't have a compliant fixture, if we go the dark sky route, the ones that have, like, a rounded thing and have a light go up and down, wouldn't, that, then depending on how we write the code, that going up wouldn't be allowed, and so you'd have to replace that if someone complained about it. So if you have a code that says X, Y, or Z, and someone complains, if you go strictly on a complaint basis, then, you know, someone who doesn't like their neighbor's lighting, whether or not it's, seems reasonable, could make a complaint. I don't know, I'm just being the demographic.
There's nuances there too, though, I mean, lighting fixtures, they shine up and down, you can't prohibit those, you can always say they have to be under E with blockage from going a certain height, and be visible.
Sure.
So, I mean, there's a lot of things you'd have to look at in this code, and the Boulder County, I mean, if you, if you wanna look at Boulder Counties, they've got a very, very comprehensive list of lights that you can use.
Yeah, we didn't use them as an example, because it was so, so much.
Well, they also have a staff, millions of them.
The ones we chose to use as examples are, like, ones that we could conceivably try to implement ourselves without more staff, and with the staff that we have that aren't lighting fixture experts.
Would you consider for, for new construction or rebuilt application package with, with supporting material from the lighting that we chose, and shows all the data? Let me have that part of the permit process, and then if that's part of the permit process, would that be required before permit? Or would that be required before CBO, so that way you're not holding up the permit? There's a lot to this, I know, and the reason why I'm asking is that there's a lot of gray areas you're gonna come up with this, and if we're gonna start with a lighting, a code for lighting, and it's gonna be townwide, then we're opening up the door for, for backyard landscaping, escaping townwide, where you put your trashcans, townwide. We're, we're opening the door for a very, very comprehensive look at the way we, we manage the built environment. So I'm not against a lighting thing at all, but this is the first step in a way that we can seriously bring everything up into compliance in the town. For example, in Old Town, there's people with garbage cans right in front of their property, there's people who refuse to cut their weeds, and we tend to give them a pass on this because it's a fire district. Are we gonna start making sure that those can be compliant too? It's just something to say, I'm not making a judgment, it's just food for thought, because if we're gonna take care of lighting here, now is for our landscaping, gonna be next, is your signage in your house gonna be the next thing? Is, you know, where you put your, you know, your derelict vehicles on the street, cars and driveways, where's it gonna stop on this point? Just, just, just throwing it out there, not making a judgment, not just saying about that.
I'm sorry if I missed this, but who, like, who's asking for this? Why is it, I mean...
Well, we've had some residents emailing us about, no, and, and what they said is that the town doesn't have any way to enforce light trespass. And I, I've seen a bunch of...
One?
I was gonna say, I only remember one.
One move, yeah.
Yeah, right, but like, in my neighborhood, I've seen a bunch of sconces, sconces going up that are very bright, they're blasting into our bit, and, you know, I'm happy to go talk to them, but there's nothing to say, you know, that, hey, maybe there's a limit on how far out those lights should go. Because as LEDs get cheaper, they're getting put into everything, they're a lot brighter than the old bulbs. Because I looked at some standards, and there's one out there, like, lighting curfews, elder lighting should be dimmed to twenty percent of max output between midnight and dawn. There's a lot of things out there that can be used to help just with that, you know, sort of pervasive light.
I just didn't know it was an issue that we needed to get in front of, like, I was, I don't, like, is it a problem? Like, we have a lot of things that are problems, like, is this, because as we keep opening the options, it's like, we're going down in the weeds with this, and then potentially opening other things, and so I'm just trying to understand, like, why, why? Like, is this something that we, is, is there a need to regulate this? Because I'm more of like, don't, like, don't touch this. Unless there's, like, a slew of people complaining about lighting, then what are we opening this for? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand, and if there is, like, open it, but I'm looking for that anchor, like, what is that?
I was curious about that too, because outside of the one complaint, I'm like, I don't remember this coming up with all the other things that we get communication about. And like Jen said, if it is an issue, like, let's talk about it, but...
And I just wanna stay away from regulating neighbors talking to each other. Like, if someone has a problem with someone's light, they should talk to their neighbor, the town shouldn't be making ordinance to, like, save everyone, like, that's not what we're doing here, I don't think.
Where does the HOA apply? I know it's an ordinance, but right now, we're just looking at this community kind of, so, for the most part. We have to get involved with HOAs at each individual community, so.
Well, I mean, the HOAs, if they have something on the books already, have the mechanism to enforce it, so like, we're gonna, if we're gonna adopt something, this might sit on top of what the HOAs are already doing, but, you know, we wouldn't be, like, creating more work for the HOA to enforce, it would be, it would be our, our thing to enforce.
And then staff's gonna enforce it?
I just, yeah, that was our day to drag around.
The mark opens, the mark, I'm like, close it, don't open this, I don't know.
Or conversely, let me throw this out to you, because I'm looking a pain in the ass about these things. There could be ordinances for individuals that do not have lighting on their house at night, where it's just dark out, right? I mean, this can be part, this can be part of the code too, so you no longer have that, that you can just have no lighting in your house, or you can have your lights off, especially in areas over here where the streetlights are very few and far between, and it is very, very dark at night. I'm just making it easy for you, okay? I'm sorry, I've, I've done a lot of houses, so I've read through many, many different codes through many municipalities, and a lot of it does get really, really into the weeds, nearly to your point, where, you know, the type of bulb, exactly, the shape of the bulb, all these crazy things that you have to do, and, you know, we pretty much have been very laissez-faire as a town, which I think is fantastic, one of our general traits, but, I mean, if we have to do a code that looks at this to make it fair, sure, we should take a look at it, but I just think it's gonna bring up a lot of different things that we're gonna start looking at, and it's gonna be, we're gonna be looking at a lot more code issues and different things we have to start managing.
Well, I, I, I hear that, I'm not necessarily, this isn't top on the priority list for me, but I'd be, I'd be willing to entertain it. And, you know, just, we do periodic code updates. If this ended up getting kind of like rolled into one of those periodic code updates, I think that's, that's fine. I don't want us to rush into any sort of code update based on, like, a single, you know, isolated complaint, and I certainly don't wanna do anything based on, you know, reacting, like, emotionally to, like, a particular complaint. Like, I want us to be mindful and careful and deliberate with anything that we're gonna consider to add to the code, but, you know, just because we have one instance where we have a, you know, a neighbor that was raising this issue, doesn't mean that other people aren't having the issue, they're just, it hasn't landed on our lap yet, and, you know, I think one of the, I think, unique qualities of this town is how much of it is master planned and built by, you know, large developers with lighting plans already versus just kind of like an organic neighborhood without a PD or anything like that. So I think that the fact that we have these PDs in place likely addresses a lot of the lighting concerns that we, we already have, so.
I mean, for me, because I, I agree, I think outside of original town, we've got PDs that mostly address things like this, and because, that's why I was curious, so I'm glad you raised it, because I'm like, where did this come from? Because we've had one complaint, and now we're talking about using staff time and hiring experts, which costs money for one complaint. I'm like, unless I see that it's a bigger issue, then, you know, I'm always open to talking about things in periodic updates, sure. I just hate to throw a bunch of money because we've had a complaint, but we've had so many complaints about so many other things, and I'm like, let's focus on things that kind of move the needle a little bit more than one issue. But to your point, maybe we're not hearing about, I mean, we hear about a lot, so I'd be surprised to not hear about more, but...
Talking to Martin, Martin drives around a lot at night to look at the issues and make complaints on this, and I know, yeah, he's gone through, especially with a lot of the new builds, he doesn't find a lot of issues with this. I think for the most part, most of the builders, like Boulder Creek, or Redminton, or Wonderland, so brothers, they understand, because they've built so many homes before, they know what type of lighting to put in, it's not gonna be a problem. lighting to put in, it's not going to be a problem. Or architects have done houses for people, they've gone through this thing many, many times, and they know what's going to work and what's not going to work. So unless you've got a homeowner who's their own GC that's not paying attention to it, then maybe there's some sort of, you know, guidance that they can be given. So when they put lighting on their house, or if they change the lights on their house, and they put something new on their house, there can be something on there. You know, I know we've got, we've got some verbiage, Matt, and we do have some verbiage in there regarding residential or, for light issues, right? Yeah, I was gonna say, it can't be, you can't cross the property line, cats.
There, and there's, sort of. It's not an enforceable, like, there's no, it's, we don't require measurement. It just says that it can't project into an adjacent, like, gosh, I could look at that. Hold on. There's, yeah, it's like a, it's, it's not a, it's so vague that we, that there's not really a way for us to enforce it. Because we, we're looking at it.
So that, to me, is like even worse. Like, if we have something on the books that actually is like completely unenforceable, like, what's the point of having it? Right? Like, then, then you're giving false hope to like anybody that's like, oh, enforce the code. We can't. So like, I would say like, if that's the case, then like, we either strike that portion of the code altogether, or we fix it. But we can't have something that is unworkable. And that's not just for this issue, but that's for like any, any issues.
So could we, instead of Renee going through this process and getting into the weeds, could we see what a consultant cost would be before we move forward on this? I mean, if we're talking $25,000 to $50,000, I'm honestly going to talk about historical committee maybe instead at this time. And again, not to say this isn't as important, but it could still stay on our radar. Is it something we could do a check in before?
Sure.
A lot of things go, you get into this, because I feel like we've just thrown a whole bunch at you that we would love to have this, you know, by the end of the summer. And this, to me, is not as highly, in my opinion. It would not be high on my list compared to some of the other things we've talked about.
Well, and to your point, and I'm 100% there with you, it's opportunity cost. So how much is an expert? Because I'm looking at all these things, you have historical commission, all these other things that we need to pay for. And I'd be more apt to, you know, because to me, since I haven't heard about it a whole lot, and it doesn't seem to be this like overarching massive issue. And not to say it won't be, and not to say it comes back and we need to look at it, but right now, I'm looking at a lot of other things that we need to pay for, and that are pressing issues. And I'd rather focus our finances there.
Is there a way that we could potentially just like a code light update so the town staff has a way to enforce what you have in the code?
Our section is Section 161850(c) "Lighting within any lot that unnecessarily illuminates any other lot and substantially interferes with the use or enjoyment of such other lot is prohibited. Lighting unnecessarily illuminates another lot if it shines directly into a residence, or if the standards adopted by the town could reasonably be achieved in a manner that would not substantially interfere with the use or enjoyment of neighboring properties." So that's.
Seems comprehensive to me, but I think the message we got is we can't, there's nothing.
There's not, yes.
No enforcement mechanism.
Right.
Or measurement.
There's no way to measure whether, what unnecessarily illuminates another lot or substantially interferes with their use or enjoyment. I mean, I can say that your lighting interferes with my enjoyment, but, you know, but.
It would have shined directly into your residence.
Yeah. I mean, if I'm holding a flashlight from the street into your window, then like, that's a direct light just like into your house. But like, if I have a light across the street and it's just really bright, and I can see in my house because of the light at your house, that's not directly into the residence. So it's just a little bit overly vague.
And Home Roll did not write that.
It's been on the books.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe, maybe there can be some, some minor, I mean, without going into like a full comprehensive rabbit hunt in terms of what we're looking at, some sort of modification to this Part C of that 161850 to give the town some means of enforcement?
Can we just slap like a measurement on there? Like, look at what other communities are doing. And say from the sidewalk, if it's, you know, beyond X amount of lumens or candle, whatever we're measuring it by, just say if it's over that, then.
That constitutes an unnecessarily illuminating, whatever.
Yeah, because right now it's very subjective. So make it objective and say, you know, at the street, if it's more than X.
That's one of the items.
And then to me, we don't need to hire a consultant and do this whole thing and throw a ton of money at it. It's what does everybody else think is reasonable and surrounding communities, great, let's throw a number at it and call it a day. And that way it's enforceable.
I will say that residents will say, how do I measure that? And I'll tell them that they need the, like, that measuring thing from Bob that I wrote in the
So you can buy it on Amazon?
Guarantee him it's not.
Podometer?
But, that's neither. Yes. I was saying, you know, to me, that seems like a better use of time and funds is just look at what the neighbors are doing to put a number to it, and some sort of objective measurement, and add that in, and then done.
If we do want to do this with hiring, if, if the light consultant is anything like an acoustic consultant is, it's going to be very expensive. So if you're going to want to do it, do it whole, I mean, do it, do it all the way through it, bring the code and everything, because then, as a way, it's going to make sense from an economic standpoint for the money you're spending on it. But like I said earlier, like, I'd be, I'd be like fine with doing that, because I think for the majority of builds and things I've seen in this town, I think everybody's pretty much complying with the code, or codes in other towns. And if we're going to do it, let's, let's add more to it. Let's really fix a lot of things we've got in this town so that there's no ambiguity in the future.
Maybe that's like part of a larger code update. Like Mike's, or Councilmember Foster's been asking about changing citizens to residents. Like, there's a lot of things that can be cleaned up in there, but I don't, I'm not wanting to ask staff to do that. I don't know what the process is for, like, looking through there and ensuring that there's not things that are missed, like unenforceable things, or language that needs to be cleaned up. And I don't know what that looks like. Like, what is, what is that? One of me just probably decides to do that.
It's one process.
And it's an iterative one, that you're never going to catch all the issues. And, I mean, we can do like these comprehensive updates that, you know, we're doing right now with Home Roll, right? We're going from Board of Trustees to Town Council, right? And making those changes. And so we can make those kind of like global find all, like those word changes. Like, we changed maybe, I don't know, 10 years ago from all of the references in the, in the code used to be to male, and then it went to gender neutral references. You know, so like, there's, there's periodic updates that happen like that, so.
Can I ask a final question? So I hear that you want to consider modification of 161850 to require an objective measurement of light at the property line that becomes enforceable, and perhaps find out how much it would cost a consultant to move forward with looking at an actual residential lighting code that covers more than just lighting at a property line. Do you want those things?
I'm in support of the first one for sure. Call it code light. The second one is a question mark. I mean, if it's easy to get a quote from a consultant, I think it's great. My, my feeling is that this is a tip of the iceberg as it goes to dark skies and migratory birds and LEDs everywhere. I'm seeing this in commercial parking lots everywhere, because the thought is like, oh, these are LEDs, they use a tenth of the energy, so I'm going to put ten of them and have the same cost, right? So things are just getting a lot brighter unnecessarily. So whether we do a consultant to wholesale update the lighting, I'm less concerned about that. But for the near term, I'd love that the town have the tools to enforce the code that we have.
Great. For me, when it comes to consultants, I'm just very cognizant that we just had a tax increase to pay for things. And so I'm always like, what is the objective that we're trying to achieve? And is it worth the amount of money we're spending to get there? And so to me, right now, it just seems like an enforceability issue, which doesn't seem like we need to spend a whole lot of time and money to do. I would, I would be a little more hesitant to start hiring experts, to start updating all kinds of stuff and charging taxpayers.
I agree. I think, I would just say like, let's just fix what we've got on the books, get something that's enforceable, rather than going down the rabbit hole of looking at consultants and spending a bunch of money on.
Someone to tell us to turn the lights down?
Got it, Nick?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Item C, discussion and state woo-woo code.
Are you going to use a good screen?
I am. I'm going to move on the other side.
Item C5.
Yeah, I could use a few minutes.
C5. All right. Back at 8:32.
No, I'm in a mood.
Sorry, Al.
We're going to be done by 10.
It's not you, Allison.
They probably didn't.
She got so many things. The blizzard, like, that was a lot. Like, oh!
Forgot you were even doing that.
And I even needed out to keep it shorter.
And whatever that...
The good thing is, I don't.
So there was like one tofu stick left.
I know, I know. I'd be in big trouble. Actually, my bullet points would just be this. I got it.
Semi-colon.
That's me.
Are we all in here now?
No.
No.
Every Monday.
Oh, I lost another one. Oh, she's right.
Snacks.
He's, I think, Lydia Carey. Been working on them for a while. This movie gone in, like, three days in my office. Cannot.
All right. Woo-ee code.
Yeah, just gonna go over the presentation and open it up for discussion.
Yeah, so this is our first kind of sneak peek at this Colorado wildfire resiliency code, AKA woo-ee code. And we've been tracking this for over a year now. And really, participating a lot, giving feedback. And this is kind of the last home stretch of this for everybody to give comment and feedback on this. So we wanted to go over it right before the deadlines, kind of make everybody aware of where they're at right now. So this code... So this code primarily targets... Sorry. Come on, man. New construction, remodels, alterations, repairs, and land development within designated wildland urban interface mapped areas. And the code includes an area for structure and an area for site management. I have deadlines at the end of this presentation that we'll go over at the end, just so everybody's on track of kind of the cadence of what's gonna go on. Like I said before, there's a building standards piece, requirements for fire resistant materials, venting, kind of the stuff we go over with wildfire partners when they look at a neighborhood assessment. It also includes some of these vehicle access door perimeter gaps, which is like where your garage is and how that envelope of the building abuts the garage. Thinking about roofs and wall assemblies and floor assemblies and decking. And then the site management piece, which is vegetation, as well as like low flashy fuel flammability, plant species, how you mitigate dead pieces on a plant, like, you know, in the spring when it grows back, you want to cut off, cut back all the dead stuff. Ladder fuels, like how high you limb up a tree, how trees abut, you know, the crown of the tree, how it abuts your roof, like, they want it to be 10 feet away. Kind of some access standards for emergency vehicles, where the road signage and the fire hydrants are marked and, you know, your house number is able to be seen from the road for fire and police. Local impact really is just adopting this code and enforcing it by meeting or exceeding the state's minimum standards. And there's a lot of wiggle room in this code and a lot of different things you'll want to go over and discuss to try to figure out how high or low do we go? Do we want it phased? And Nick's gonna definitely have to hang out with us for a while on this, which, he mentioned it to me, he gave me a look, and I said, I know, you'll be in this. This is just the beginning of this discussion. So, you know, assessing this code and thinking about our risks and what we need around our infrastructure to kind of develop this code. And then I provided a link here on the mapping, which the mapping is very interesting. So here's a couple of examples of our mapping. And on the left-hand side, you could see original town. And, you know, parcels are cut in half, which, you know, that would apply to the whole parcel. But also neighborhoods are kind of trimmed and diced in different ways. On the right-hand side, you could see kind of, you know, where our open space on the west meets up with McCaslin and how, you know, the orange is a higher class than the yellow of these Zone 1 and Zone 2 is what they're called, so...
Allison had a question on that.
Sure.
You know, Car State's got its wildfire risk viewer. It's dynamic, based on, you know, how dry or hot, you know, what kind of vegetation you have.
Yes.
But I couldn't, this looks to be a static image.
There are layers, yes. So there are many, many layers in this mapping. And we can pull that up, too, if you want to pull that up.
No, no, it's more a function of, like, if we start adapting our code based on this sort of static image here, and if something changes, we have to start revising our code. Or if, I don't know, but it's just, it's making my head explode in terms of just the permutations of what might be required. Because when we went through this with the, I forgot the name of the organization, Molly was heading.
ULI?
ULI.
Urban Land Constitutions?
Uh, yeah.
Is that right?
No, it's not ULI, it's wildfire.
Oh, partners.
Partners.
All partners.
But she said the entire town is in the woo-ee.
Okay, so this is, this is exactly where we need to be going. So here's some policy questions. You're right on the money.
I'm trying to take that map and think about, the whole town's in the woo-ee. Why are we even talking about different yellows and greens and blues?
Okay, so this is a perfect segue to these policy questions in my mind. Because, you know, like, the first thing that we were talking about, like, if a parcel's cut in half by this color because of the pixel, they've pixelated it from such a high view, it's not parcel by parcel. So, you know, if, if the risk area touches the parcel, then it's the whole parcel. And it's private owned as well as town owned. So that's an important distinction. Then you start thinking about if a risk area touches a neighborhood, are we gonna do the whole neighborhood? So if Sagamore is cut in half, do we go to the first larger road? I don't know, that's a definite policy discussion. Do we want to phase that? You know, maybe it's just the map that touches the parcel, the parcels that are touched primarily, and then it expands over time, because this is gonna be a heavy lift as far as code enforcement and things like that as these permits come in or buildings go up. Do we want to think about the Marshall Fire footprint? Do we want to think about the McCaslin Corridor West? Do we want to talk about fingers of open space and how they go through all of our neighborhoods?
And ditch management.
Sure. I mean, there's so many little pieces to this that can make it very complicated or very, very simple. You know, thinking about the map layers, like what you were saying, the problem with that vegetative piece, in my mind, is that if we have a damp season and it's a specific species in this area, and then it changes the next season, how do we, you know, changing those codes constantly could be hard. We could look at the different layers as different options on the map base. And then there's a question of the appendices in the back. And do we want to look at some or part or all of those? So it's pretty complicated.
The code does say that if it touches, it has to be included, and it has to be at whatever level. So if it's orange, it has to be, you know, classed.
It's a must.
It's a must comply, and by the dates that are outlined in the bill. So like, there are certain things that we have to do according to the code. And then there's all of these questions that we aren't sure how to apply. And there's not, you know, that's left up to us.
Right.
And obviously hexagons aren't ideal for defining an area.
I thought it was triangles, so I appreciate you telling me that it's hexagonal.
Yeah, they're pixels, yeah. Well, if you look on that left side, you can see where some of the parcels are cut in half. And we know the ones that are touched are gonna be defined as that, in orange, that class two. So the question would be, is it, do we just start off with those that are touched already? Do we...
So what are the ramifications of, you know, just kind of realistically, for, for the folks who live in homes that are falling within these state-created maps? As a practical matter, like, what are they, what are they facing in terms of additional burdens? Do they need to be cutting back trees? Do they need to be doing things to comply with the state statute? Or is that something that we're required to effectuate?
I think yes and yes. I think the first one is if they pull a permit and it's for the replacement of, say, 25% or more of their siding, then it needs to be a wildfire, more hardy-resistant material.
Already?
Yes, and the site, if it's 25% or more, and the site would also have to be compliant. So like, if they had branches that touched their roof, they would also have to mitigate that. So once they pull a permit and that 25% or more has to be replaced, or if they add an addition of 500 square feet that are gonna be occupied or more, then it starts... Right.
And that's for the building code laws.
Don't touch the house.
Touch the house, ever.
Yes.
The landscape is gonna be interesting on how everybody interprets this.
Just using the Sagamore as an example, I mean, there's, we all know the lot sizes are tiny, you're basically in your neighbor's yard. But also butts our open space as well as Boulders' open space. Like, what's the, one of the things that, you know, if that tree is then into your yard, like, 10 feet of your house by the time, in this case, municipal property, how does that...
And we would have to figure out a way to mitigate that. If it's, if it's a structure, a facility that we're expanding, and theoretically, we would have to pull a permit, even though if it's our own facility, usually we do that more internally.
Because I'm actually, and I'm not thinking about Sagamore in that case, I'm thinking about Hilltop, because we've got a bunch of trees on Hilltop that are within 10 feet of these homes. And there are trees.
That's a good question.
Allison, what about fences?
Yes.
Because fences go directly up and touch the house, and the majority of the ones go back as a firewood. So how do we mitigate that?
And, and right now, it's not retroactive unless the council wants to interpret it, or...
But if you replace your fence, 25% or more, then?
Yes.
But the houses that are completely in the orange area, that's an entire fence.
And this is effective when?
26. Monday.
So, here we go. So here's our, kind of our timelines, there's a lot of timelines. There's written feedback. There's an opportunity for public and stakeholder feedback, like a virtual opportunity. July 1 is the state's adoption. March 1 is Superior's adoption. And then July 1 of, and that's 2026. And then July 1 of 2026 is our implementation, and when we need to roll out our education around this.
So we currently don't permit for fences?
Except for original tenant, right?
We are, we're doing a permit for zoning compliance. So the code hasn't changed, but our review, we are reviewing fences now, when we weren't before, just to ensure that they are complying with the...
With the non-combustible.
With the code. So in Sagamore...
So Sagamore, somebody has a wood fence right now, all right? And five, 10 years down the road...
But only half of Sagamore, if we go that route.
Right, whatever the, the currently state-dictated...
Right.
...map covers a portion of Sagamore, a portion of Rock Creek, whatever. People have wood fences there, and we, they don't need to come to us to get a permit to install their fence. They've installed their fence five, 10 years down the road. They need to replace their fence for whatever reason.
Or their roof.
Have to be compliant.
They, they then need to demonstrate to us that they're complying with. And how do they know that they need to do that? Versus just going to the contract?
Implementation and education to inform the community.
Well, when they go to pull their permit and get approval, then they would get this checklist, right?
They don't need a permit.
They want a permit for a fence.
They do, they, we're, that's what we're doing now. It's zoning compliance for fences through the community corps. It's a permit, it's a, it's like a flat fee, just so that we can review and ensure that fencing is meeting our code requirements.
So everybody's going to need to pull a permit for...
For fences.
Fences to demonstrate that they're compliant, then whether or not they're within the woo-ee or not remains to be seen.
Exactly.
Right? Whether it's a state woo-ee or a state-plus-town woo-ee.
In Sagamore, we at least have... In Sagamore, we do have, anyone who wasn't an original owner has to build a fence that's woo-ee compliant. So at least there's some. But it is tough that, like, we have allowed folks to build back without complying with that. And now this is telling them that when they go to replace their fence, you know, if they replace a certain amount, then they have to replace the whole thing and be woo-ee compliant.
Well, I guess for Sagamore, we said it couldn't be cedar.
Correct.
So that was the one thing we did.
Well, no, we said it didn't have to be cedar.
Oh, yeah.
You said they can do whatever they want.
Because, no, because it used to have to be cedar.
It had to be cedar, yeah, we took that.
So now we said, no, it does not have to be cedar.
We said you didn't have to have a fence.
Correct.
Yes.
So what, how does this, what is this gonna do to people who are in the far orange area and they get a wood fence, and this thing comes in compliance? What is the insurance gonna say about this? Are they gonna say, you're, you're good? Or are they gonna throw some, you're not compliant, your house burnt down again, we're not gonna cover you? Because we know how great State Farm and all the other agencies were after the fire.
It's a great question.
No, I think anybody who is within a woo-ee designated area, whether by the town or by the state or both, the insurers are gonna be on top of that, and they're gonna say, hey, this is a woo-ee designated property. It's 25% more expensive to endure, or 50% more, or...
So is there any, are there any examples of it being beneficial that the entire town has adopted these things so that as a community, it's looked at as a woo-ee compliant for insurability? Like, are there any incentives to overreaching what they're saying versus individual resident property owners burdening, like, holding it because they just happen to, you know, be next to open space that might not manage equally, even though they, you know, should be? I don't know, I just, there's gotta be some models out there for when an, like, we're small enough that if that was a choice... I don't know that that's the right thing. I'm just thinking about this from working in other fire communities of, sometimes they look at the whole community and they're like, okay, we're gonna be, we're gonna be woo-ee compliant as a whole town, and therefore, everybody in this area, from the insurance perspective, is looked at as a safer, more insurable, lower cost, you know, whatever it is. And also, just, just Monday, I was, wait, today's Monday? Friday, Thursday? I don't know what date it is. Last week, at some point, I was on a phone call with Senator Schiff's office, who's working on a bill right now at the national level that would give $25,000 to homeowners looking to do mitigation upgrades. And so that's the intent, that they're gonna start as, as a nation, like, rolling out things like this where there will be some funds available. But they're working on the mechanisms, because I had questions like, well, how do people get reimbursed if they do it themselves? How do unskilled labor get paid? And so there's a lot of things to figure out. But I think those mechanisms will come as these kinds of things happen, just like, we know that the metal fences are comparable to the wooden fences now, and as the demand increases, some of the things that were just not gonna be feasible for people rebuilding with deltas in their finances are... This is going to cause there to be a supply line that's less expensive and just the way that it is. So I'm just, I'm carrying both of like, oh my God, this is a lot! But also, there are going to be nets that catch some of the things that come from the impacts that come financially on people. And I know Kyle Brown's working on something, too, that's for insurance companies to be able to provide mitigation, essentially charging insurance companies 1% or something, depending on the policy, to have a fund where people can apply for grants for things like hardening their roof or whatever it is for a mitigation. So there's levels that this is being worked on to try to wrap around the, what's gonna be the impact financially for this.
You know, it makes me think of our DOI town halls, too, that we were going to. You know, I wonder if they have some data on, you know, other woo-ee compliant municipalities and like, what has been that trickle-down? Because they were doing all those town halls. There was a lot of little places up in the mountains that were having insurance issues. And, you know, I could probably ask them, they, they probably got all of that.
That's a really, is Colorado Springs and Castle Rock adopted citywide zoning ordinances years ago.
Yeah.
Right? And they're, they're very prescriptive.
Some best practices.
Yeah, I mean, it's, again, it feels like we should never have to reinvent the wheel.
I've pulled all of their information for the educational pieces. So however, you know, whatever the council decides on how this, you know, you want to implement this, then I can scale it back or push it forward or, you know, tweak that so that we have all of that.
Yeah, it'd be really good to talk to them about the growing pains they went through. I mean, obviously with Colorado Springs, they went through fire and they were able to implement a lot of this. But Castle Rock rolled out, I think it was in 2019?
Yeah.
Very specific zone standards on building to building and whatever.
And our fire marshal actually spoke to Colorado Springs when we, in the beginning of this, because we, we kind of got a little group together of Lewisville Fire, Mountain View Fire, Planning and Building, Preparedness, Safeville. And we've been meeting, like, as this has been firming up, we've been meeting together, like, what are our concerns? Like, these policy pieces are, were our concerns, really, all of these questions we had. So one of the things we also did was I reached out to DOLA, and hopefully, they'll kind of get a peer-to-peer group to help to implement this. Just like... Exactly, just like they kind of did on the ADUs, they kind of got that policy group, and we're like, hey, this would be another good, you know, piece to help us with, because we're all gonna go through this, so...
One thing that I'd be interested in knowing is, to the extent that there are communities like Colorado Springs and Castle Rock that have already implemented their townwide woo-ee codes, to what extent is the new state mandates that are coming out inconsistent with what they've already done? Like, so did they already, like, basically solve a problem, but now the state's saying, like, but now you gotta do these additional things? Or were they already kind of sufficient? And like, they're satisfying any of the new requirements that the state is imposing? So, and like, so what's their reaction to this new state bill or state law that...
And I think it's not just them, it's even closer areas that have, you know, perhaps implemented some things that now that this is coming out, there are little conflicts, like you're talking about.
Listen, there, like, a recent judgment, I don't know if this is just for California, but the ability to corporations that are impacting climate change to essentially hold them accountable for the kinds of things that now individuals have to burden because they're... of things that now individuals have to burden because they're preparing their homes for fires because of-
Well, Boulder's suing Suncor.
Yeah.
And so, they survived, like, the motion to dismiss, so their claim can go forward, so that, and that's, that's the claim, it's-
Yeah.
They're seeking damages against Suncor for the greenhouse gas emissions that they've emitted from their plants. And so, that is a pretty novel legal theory, and we'll see where it goes, but-
I think they're organizing that in the LA area as well, for, but it, I mean, I guess it depends on what you subscribe to, but, you know, full circle of like, now individuals are bearing this cost, and municipalities are gonna bear this cost, and who?
I think, I think, like, my, my, I appreciate this update, and, and thank you for tracking it so closely. My preference with anything that we're looking at from like a WUI perspective is, I mean, I think fortunately, we've gotten everybody, most, most of the community rebuilt, and, you know, we were able to help them rebuild quickly and save them money where they could, without kind of like, coming down with the, like, draconian standards that was gonna prevent them from rebuilding altogether. Now, I kinda just look at it from the, like, interplay of, like, what's efficient, and like, good governance, and like, what you don't wanna have is like, the state saying one thing, and the county saying another, and then the municipality saying something else, and like, people just getting confused as to like, "What do I need to do?"
Yeah.
What makes sense? So, I'd, I'd entertain doing nothing and allowing the state to just do what it's doing, if that, if that's what we think is the best thing to, from a consistency of messaging. But on the flip side, I'm also willing to entertain, like, broadening the WUI to include the whole town, if we think that that actually is better for the entire town, and kinda consistent with what other municipalities have kinda dealt with in the past, and, and like, how that interplays with what the state is requiring. What I, what I just wanna avoid is like, I don't want like, one, one year, like, the state comes down and says something, and then six months later, we say something, and then, you know?
Unless we-
And then, just like all these different, different messages and requirements, and it just doesn't seem like fair or smart, so.
And I guess, you know, with the other choices, we wait for this peer-to-peer network, really, to get up and running, so we can all kind of try to be as consistent as possible, or go to the least aggressive solution first, and then, you know, if there is a planned phase, more phased approach, like, one year, just the ones that are touched. Year three, to a major road, or something like that, you know, just to where, cause the burden will be great, depending on if we go retroactive on site, site management versus just when the permit is pulled, that changes 25% or more of X.
One thing that I, that I definitely want us to look into before we get anywhere near, like, adopting anything on our own, is looking into kinda like the insurance premium impacts of when you live in a WUI designated area, because I, I would not wanna have a situation where, like, we feel good about ourselves, and we're like, we're all gonna be in the WUI, and then we've just increased the homeowner's insurance premiums for all of our residents by 50%.
I don't wanna, I, I wanna say this, like, but it also makes me curious about implementing one of these codes, and we've had the Marshall Fire, and there is that footprint, and then, you know, having these weird pixelated maps that aren't even covering that Marshall Fire footprint, and like, just the open discussion, you know, how does, you know, how do we feel about that? And it's hard, it's, it's a hard, hard discussion.
Is there any data to support that if an area had already burned, that the likelihood of it doing it again because of not having the fuel? Like, is there, is that why it's not, if you look at the bigger map, it shows it on the edge of Superior, and then right past Superior, and over at Redtail Ridge, and over there, it's all orange again. And so, it's like, we're just a little gap between two orange areas, and that doesn't make any sense at all.
And the question, if, if the neighborhood has already burned, and where, if the premiums have already gone up, will that make a difference? I don't know. I mean, this is a lot of data we need to really work on and try to do a-
Do an insurance survey of the community on people, whether they've had rates go up, or- Cause there's a lot of anecdotal, like, people tell us stories, and, but I don't know, like, I've heard a few, but not anything that I could say, "Oh, this is a trend that's happening a lot." People, but this was like, a year after the fire.
Yeah.
Where people were not getting renewed, or their rates were going up, and then I haven't really heard much, and-
Or someone was just jumped ship to a new carrier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's tough to, to look at rates jumping, cause I know mine did, but when I talk to an insurance agent, they're like, "It's not, it's fire, it's hail."
Right.
And we're paying out so much in hail-
Hail is the biggest.
That, that's why everything's skyrocketing, it's really the storms, and not so much the fire. I mean, obviously, the fire plays into it, but it'd be tough to pinpoint.
Yeah.
And I'd also be curious, kinda to Mark's point, but on the flip side of that, if we went all WUI, and now people are getting increased rates because they're not compliant with WUI, if we were all WUI, and it saves people on their insurance, how much are they actually saving? Cause is that negated by the cost of now having to put in the fencing, and-
If it helps, or if it hurts, right?
Like, the overall, you know, you're getting a discount on your insurance, but how much are you paying now to be compliant, and does that really not make sense?
That's not our only hope, should that.
No, I was just, it, it, it's, it's gonna be hard to pinpoint all of this. I really believe that.
Yes.
It, it may be almost impossible, and we can dig up what we can, like, from DOI, or if we did a survey, or something like that, but I think it's gonna be, this is a wiggly.
You know, interestingly, Maui already did this, like, almost a year after their fire, and people were losing their minds, because they were telling them, all the trees and things that were against houses, homes to keep them cooler, advantage temperature, like, all had to be cut down. And so, and then LA is already looking at this, and they haven't even really gotten into rebuilding yet, and so, I'm not surprised, but it's three and a half years later, almost, yeah. Three and a half years? That we're just getting to this, which, there's other, like, we, we can look at other fires that have gone through this and adopted WUI codes and see, like, I'll talk to Maui to see what their pain points were, and how this rolled out between, cause it was multiple municipalities, just like ours, and so, that, that has always been an issue. I'm curious, because the Wednesday is the feedback deadline, and that's on the report, that's like 25 pages. Are there things in there that you're very, like, is there a way we can support, or is there, are there things that you would like to see commented on because of issues, or?
You know, there's some language. I feel like on page 29, there's, the first sentence is, "The provisions of this chapter shall apply to parcels subject to this code", and this is specifically for the site and area requirements. And so, to me, I think that they've left the door open for interpretation for that retroactive, like, if there wasn't a new permit pulled, I would be afraid if we would have to do site and area requirements for landscape and fencing, if there wasn't a permit pulled for that 25% or more of a change for like a roof or siding. And, and I guess, I'm not an attorney, I guess that's the one area that it feels-
Well, we all feel-
It's squishy. We're, we're not really sure-
Not in favor of us, like, it's-
Right, I mean, you, you could apply something that covers all of it, but then what, then you're making people do something that they may not have to do, at a point when they may not have to do it, and that, and, and then we also have to-
Highlight it.
-make sure that they're compliant, which means inspections, and like, all of these, I mean, it snowballs very quickly, and so, the concern is just like, how do you, how do you interpret that?
I, I agree with, no, you're, very good point, because we've had more than one natural disaster in this town, and we're focusing on WUI, and I do not wanna be putting the burden on the entirety of town, because let's say, in five years, we get a thousand-year flood. We get a flood, which makes the 2013 flood look like a summer rain, and it takes out Old Town, it takes out Sagamore. Hey, WUI compliant, though, we took care of that, and, and we just dropped the ball on everything else. You know, this, this is just, you, I think we're like, over, we're being a little bit too cautious on this, because this is the latest disaster that's happened to us, but we've had other things in the past, that I'd rather not put all our efforts onto this one thing to enforce the entirety of the town, when just the WUI area corridor is where we should focus.
But if one of those other disasters happens to one of the houses in this zone district, that may become required, then, then we would have to require them to become WUI compliant, right? So, like, any-
Because we would have to upgrade.
Fix that.
Fix that.
Like, if you, if it was a, if it was a hail, and the roof was damaged, then they have to now become compliant with this.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
And that, that would, that would make sense, because that would, that would be an understandable change anytime you just, like, I mean, like, for a flood, for example, if we have such a massive flood, the floodplains are all changing. Those are all gonna be redrawn again, and those areas are gonna be using the floodplain. They're gonna have to come up the standards, and if they make that change, they've gotta be WUI compliant also, maybe.
But maybe this is also wiggly, is for us to be wiggling.
Right. We can choose to-
Back to the map.
Has the car or municipal league weighed in on this code?
It's not final yet, technically.
I mean, from the map, technically, there's not a lot of properties that have to comply, if most of us, our town is not in the, if it's by the, like, letter of-
Yes.
This is a spot, or it's not.
Yeah, it's probably like 100 homes, still.
Yeah. It was really gonna suck for them individually, if there isn't a way to-
Right.
Run that out and mitigate.
But even this is very interesting right here. I mean, the, the rhyme and reason of, you know-
I don't understand why there's nothing where the fire actually came through.
I know, I know.
Through across the road into Rock Creek is not in the-
What's interesting is that Rocky Flats is just crosshatched. It's like, it's not a color, it's just-
It doesn't count, does it?
I think that means toxic-
It's a variation, they all get it.
I think that's what I'm saying.
Right, so then they don't have to do anything.
They don't have to.
And we're right next to it.
This is gonna be a problem.
Well, and I mean, this is-
This is considered US.
I think this is actually, I think I snagged this from Colorado Springs, for example, like, there's a lot of good material out there that we'll be able to piggyback on, depending on how these conversations go, and we'll just do our best to at least come up to the minimum, I think, is what I'm hearing.
Is this the state having any conversations on funding for mitigating, whether asking people to?
Well, yes. I think that there's been, you know, that insurance discussion about the bill for, you know, having bonds in place for insurance bonds, so when a disaster happens, we have, the state has funding to shore up the bonds for insurance companies for disasters, to try to help keep the insurance companies from leaving Colorado, basically, to where they don't have to create their own insurance, state insurance, to help to cover residents. But, you know, the way federal funding is changing, that landscape is changing, I'm not sure, you know, what's gonna happen to those different initiatives.
I don't know if you guys are paying track in this, but like, they're planning to, like FEMA's going away, I think, that is just getting cut from systems to support at the federal level, so the states are gonna have to really come up with ways to support this kinda stuff, and prepare for disaster versus knowing that there's gonna be this entity that comes in, in which case, I hope they do some tax adjustments, cause that's what they're giving a lot of money for, so.
Alright, thanks for the presentation and the information. Keep us posted with additional developments. I think my, my, my general feeling right now, in terms of what we should do, is sit and wait, and wait for the, the state to kinda finalize what they're doing, and not consider doing anything like over and above what the state is doing.
Do you-
But I do think that we should look into, you know, if we can find out information about, kind of, the examples from other communities that have already designated themselves broadly as WUI communities, and then also, if we can find something from the Division of Insurance on typical premium impacts when homes are designated as WUI.
I've got six things to look into that I can, like, I'll try my best to give for you. The other thing I did do is I met with a software company called Fireside, that a lot of municipalities are starting to use for this site management and piece, that's really complicated with these plants and everything, and so, I got a quote, I also got a quote from them, just to see, like, what does this even look like as far from a software standpoint, possibly another code enforcement staff person to work with, both of us, or Fire District, or Safe Built, or, you know, how that rolls into implementation, so.
Is there any, I feel like the people who are in these zones should be told, like, they should pay attention to this.
And we've been putting this out.
Yeah. But if it's like, let's say it's 100 houses, like, can we-
Yeah.
Send something that's, not like we're saying, we, this, you have to do anything, but like, here, this is like, we've done everything we can to get this to you, like mail, or, I don't know.
But we should let, be clear to make, make sure that we're not saying that we're, we're deeming this.
Right.
This is something that the state-
Information that, like, cause I don't know that, especially some of these houses, they are up by Coyote Ridge, they didn't, they weren't impacted from the fire in, in the smoke, or-
Right.
So, they're, they might not be paying attention to this kinda stuff, I mean, I would just hate for that to be like, if insurance companies are looking and tracking these things, like, I just would rather people have more heads up that that's happening, and I don't know what that looks like, and if there's a way that we can make sure that they know.
Could we put something in like a utility bill, maybe, or?
A utility bill.
No one reads their utility bills.
Oh.
That's true.
A door hanger?
I mean, that actually might be a great idea. Like, I mean, I'll post it on the Sagamore, I'll post it to Sagamore, like, after this meeting, so people in Sagamore be aware. But I think that the sort of broad awareness, Sagamore and Hilltop seem to be the two areas.
You know, on the list- This is a Rock Creek, right?
Yeah. On the list that Mark laid out, the, the one thing I'd like to hear, kind of, you know, cause Colorado Springs, Castle Rock, they've done this, there's some learnings, but like, Longmont is gonna be affected. Let's just look at the map, like, what are their plans? Like, what are some of the other east county communities doing?
And, and that's why we, we're really, we, actually, we've gotten, we know that Arbada wants to be a part of this kind of west of 25 peer-to-peer sharing network, hopefully-
This is like north.
Lions, Lewisville, us, Arbada, and like, how, just trying to get some consistency together, like, you know, if we go from the minimum, what does that look like?
I can't ask at the Consortium of Cities too, cause they're all gonna be-
Absolutely.
-dealing with this. Unfortunately, that meeting's Wednesday night, and I'm not gonna go because of the- It was supposed to be last, it got, the thing that happened at Boulder, they posted on it, and so, I'm gonna go to them. But I will email and ask them, but I don't wanna miss the word. But I think I can, I'm sure, get a lot of email responses and start, at least have that conversation going.
Alright.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
Alright, we're moving on to item D, which is the discussion of adding street art to underpasses for aesthetics and security, and to sides of buildings and downtowns, to create a sense of place to draw people to downtown.
Do you want me to take this one?
So, I asked for this to be on there mainly because I'm looking for ways to stretch our dollars, and I know that we wanna obviously increase the art around town. So, two places I thought would make sense to look at this, the underpasses, we've got four underpasses, one of which we obviously did a mural on right here behind Town Hall. We've got three others that don't have art right now. Looking back at the October agenda, it costs $17,650 to put in that mural. Looking back at the October agenda, it costs $17,650 to put in that mural, which is much cheaper than the sculptures that we're putting in, and we just saw the minor bronze is going to be $79,000. So just looking at art that's a lot more economical and quite honestly more striking, you see those a little more readily than, you know, a sculpture. So underpasses seemed like a good place to put those. It increases safety because it creates more of a sense of place, people go to those a little bit more and it just looks a little less sketchy than going in an underpass that's got cobwebs and nothing and it just makes you feel a little uneasy. So underpasses was one area that I wanted to look at doing that. And then also our commercial cores, specifically downtown Superior, but not just downtown Superior, because we're hearing from some of the businesses and like the Safeway complex, that they're seeing graffiti and just behind their building is, is seeing some vandalism, so they were asking for maybe looking at some artwork there. But also we've heard feedback from, from residents that downtown seems very sterile, it doesn't really have this sense of place yet, and I know that will come, obviously, with more businesses coming in and activating that area more, but it does kind of seem like, I think the analogy I used on Monday was if you're going to purchase a house and there's a house that's not staged and it's just empty and kind of feels, you know, sterile and unwelcoming, and then you have one that's staged and it's a little more welcoming and kind of draws people in. So, you know, good street art draws people in and not that it's a blighted area by any means, but if you look at Rhino, which was a blighted area once the industries left and it became, you know, super crime ridden, kind of fell into disrepair and because it was, you know, not a great area, artists moved in because artists, you know, tend to not have tons of money. And so they, they had this whole artist community move in, they put up all kinds of street art and it totally transformed the area and now there's shops and eateries and people specifically go there for the street art. I, I had Atlas Obscura reach out to me and ask if I do photography tours for street art specifically in Rhino. And so I was running tours down there. I, I had a handout I was trying to get to you guys and it's a very heavy PDF, so I'm trying to figure out how to get it to you because it's, it's so large, but I'll figure that out and send it to you. But, you know, people go to these areas specifically for street art and then, you know, we would meet and everybody would, you know, either eat ahead of time or after, they're popping into shops. It was just, it was really cool to see how it activated that. You look at Cape Town and the Woodstock area and that was another kind of blighted area that was transformed with street art that, you know, now it draws people in and there's little eateries and, so it's just a really good way to get people in, especially if you get good street art. And there's a number of great examples both, you know, across the globe, but more locally, there's some really, really good street artists and again, I'll, I'll send you this PDF, but I'll show it to you here, just a little snippet of it, just to show you that, you know, the street art, there's styles to it, it's really, really interesting, you can make it more superior focused. In the memo that I had Matt forward to you guys, you can see there's like postcards and it says, you know, like greetings from Moab or Superior, you know, wherever. And you can have that kind of show history and what makes our community unique and that becomes a photo op and then people are taking pictures and just being downtown Superior this week and I'm looking at all these blank brick walls and I'm like, that would be a great spot because there's just this blank canvas that's fighting for rain. And so, you know, I just, I think it would be a very economical way to liven up those areas to make it a little bit more interesting, especially with Sundance coming in, we want it to be like a cool area, people want to hang out and it's not that yet and I know we're building it up, but I think a great way to do that, that wouldn't cost a fortune like some of these sculptures that, you know, are great, but a lot of them, I know they're very expensive and, you know, you don't really notice them as much. You know, street art you notice and, you know, it's a lot of bang for your buck. So I just wanted to get that on everybody's radar and kind of feel how people feel about it and get a discussion around that. And, and then another one that would be easy, that I think it's like $1,200 to do each is utility boxes. And we're already starting to see some of that, but we have many more that aren't done yet. And so, you know, focusing some dollars to, you know, make those interesting. I know in Bozeman, all of them are done and it's the coolest thing when you pull up to a stoplight and you see all these different, you know, it's, it's art and not expensive to do. And so I just want to make our dollars stretch and, and create more of a sense of place and it increases safety and all the good things, so.
I mean, you don't need to convince me I'm there. I, I love street art. I love everything that CAPS has done with all of their efforts to put more art in underpasses and wrapping utility boxes and painting anything, so I'm, I'm down for it. I think in the plans for Bigsby's, then they have a mural on one of the faces of the building.
The west as well as the Hyatt Place Hotel.
Yeah. So, I mean, hopefully like those will be some additions, but yeah, I mean, let's, let's do it. Where, where do I sign?
Yeah, just numbers though. The Rock Creek mural will be about 22K because it's longer, right? So they're just, they're scaling it up based on this mural, so the other one's a little longer, so, but I think we're getting a good deal in that too.
Yeah, so to make, to make stuff like this a reality, we, I think, just need to commit to budgeting for it regularly. And are we delegating it to CAPS to implement it and to locations? Like, what's, what's your thoughts on a plan for how to actually roll this out?
So I think JG would probably drive a lot of that for CAPS and I'm very cognizant of how much she has on her plate, so I'd want to see if she even has the capacity to do this. If not, I know Public Works, some of them, Public Works is willing to take that on. And then I've got some contacts that I can reach out to some Colorado artists to get us people that could do art here that I see all over Denver that, once you, and again, I'll try to figure out how to get this attachment to you guys, but the artists have a very notable style and so when you're driving around and you know which artist is which, you start seeing them everywhere and so, which is kind of cool, but-
We'd have to do an RFP process, like CAPS went through an RFP process for the mural right here. So I mean, if we're talking about increasing CAPS' budget, because they would be happy to do 10 more murals, right? They just, they, like, in the budget that Drew sent around, they have $55,000 for sculpture and art, right? And if we want to tell them, we want to do two more murals, we just give them $40,000 more and then they will go through the process because they've gone through it, they, they learned a lot putting this mural in in terms of things that worked and didn't work and how to do it. JG's got everything ready to go. I think it's a function of what do we want to leverage CAPS to go do, given that they've built those relationships, but we have to give them the money to do it.
Yeah.
And I mean, there were two sculptures that were supposed to be in downtown that ended up elsewhere because the district over here was MIA, right? Like, and those are all about placemaking and everything else. And now we have a contact, but those other two pieces, I think, are fantastic, they're just poorly located right now. It would have been amazing here.
And that's a question too, is I know the Metro District has been a nightmare to deal with, with sculptures and so for the buildings, is that Metro District, is that-
I think, I mean, some of the buildings are privately owned, like loose board state.
Yeah. And then it's just a question of like, how does that interact with like the PD and the design standards? You know, because all of that is approved, we can, we could change it, but, you know, we can't, certainly can't force, you know, private property owners to install, you know, art inside of their walls, but if they wanted to, then it's just a question of like, what does the PD and the design standards say?
Well, it's, a lot of the schematics that they showed us actually had art, especially those tunnels going to the garages, right? So that was always something that they envisioned.
Yeah.
It just kind of fallen through.
Yeah. I mean, we, I mean, we, we can make it happen.
Yeah.
There's just, you know, a couple of things to deal with, right?
In terms of the, the process of submission, for example, the food court and the pizza restaurant, you made a point of the, the pizzeria backing towards the sports stadium with a blank wall that was on, and that would be the response for it, so that's Jen's Wall. No, because, no, because, let me finish real quick. And the thing with CAPS, I don't think you need to give CAPS more money and I don't want to sort of fight with CAPS, but they, they spend a ton of money on sculptures that nobody notices, people walk by it, but you'll notice like the, the utility boxes, nobody notices those things before because they blend into the environment. Once you put paintings and things on it, suddenly people pay attention to these things. So it's like, oh, utility box right here, because it just, it kind of blends away, it's sort of like a gas meter on a house, nobody ever, ever sees where they're located. This could be an opportunity to put more intrinsic value into the art and people actually have more appreciation value for it, rather than looking at a statue going, ah, I'm not sure what that is. But they see a mural and they kind of get it because we're almost conditioned to see murals as an extension or maybe a graduated form of graffiti in urban areas.
So on the RFP process, so in Denver, they have this, it's like graffiti week or, where they cover and then the artists come and do, it's like every year they refresh. And knowing that Sundance is coming, what if there was a space in town that artists got to do whatever they wanted to showcase as part of an event for Sundance, like prior to it? There's ways to build this in that doesn't, may not require-
Money.
-money from us, but a setup of an opportunity and some marketing or, or it becoming a habit or, you know, a thing that people look forward to, like the unveiling of or whatever it is in a space where then they will go and shop and eat and do whatever. But I think there's something, like, and also I think that avoids the, the-
Contracting.
-RFP process of the contracting and would get buy-in from like a larger artistic community and even maybe internationally because of the event that's there, so there's some things to do with that.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think in the past, because we, we said, hey, we want to do this piece, so we had to go through our talent contracting process. But if it's a broader, you know, hey, let's do a crush, you know, kind of thing, then there's more that can happen. And CAPS, the CAPS members right now have enormous connections to a lot of artists. I mean, it's actually really fascinating right now how many artists-
It's a good idea, like the wall on the back, because I don't know how, it's outside of trees, which we now won't be able to put right next to the building, so.
That's your idea, that's not mine.
Yeah. Did I say that?
Like Brandon's on-
I thought of it, but it's yours.
Brandon on CAPS actually knows a mural artist throughout Rhino, right? Like, oh yeah, he knows him and we could leverage that and that's where, again, CAPS can do more, you know, with the sculptures, I think even CAPS is disappointed where they ended up because it didn't work out for downtown, because this coyote hawk is incredible, he's in the middle of-
And that heart, what do you mean? Like, that was so cool!
But, yeah, and it's unfortunate that those were, ended up where they did. They're on loan, so we can give them back, we can move them, that kind of thing.
Or the big flower inside the community center, which is cool.
But it needs to stay indoors.
But it would be way cooler if it was out.
That's right.
Well, and, you know, the prairie dogs are coming back. I mean, there's, there's other things we can do with sculptures, you know, like the prairie dogs were great, one got stolen and then all of a sudden they all got, went into hiding, so.
He went hiking.
Spirit hiking. He went on a spiritual-
It went on a wild trip.
Somebody took him.
No.
Went to the top of the second flatter.
She's impressive.
It's a brilliant experience.
To be college kids.
They're 45 pounds of weight.
It's a fraternalism.
Alcoholic teenager-y or whatever.
It could have still been there until Boulder County Open Space found it.
Just as cool though, I think there's going to be a lot of space for these kinds of things to happen.
And like, to your point, I mean, Denver with Rhino did crash, now it's Denver Walls and that draws, and it's a week-long festival, all the artists come in, you get to watch them make the art on the walls that need kind of refurbished and if anybody hasn't been down to Denver Central Market, that alley behind, it's been all unrelated, the surrounding blocks, but it, it draws people in, it's a super cool event, it's all centered around art. I, I wonder if Brandon knows if the artists are paid for that or if-
They get like a stipend.
They do, they get like a certain amount.
Even with Boulder's Grill Fest, they get like, I think like $5,000.
So maybe we do a festival and stipend and get the property owners to buy in and then that would be a great way to get some bang for our buck and get artists, because a lot of them, you see them in Denver, but they're, you don't see them out here, so it would be good to get their work kind of west.
Yeah, and, and like with anything, and I've learned this, just to get some of the big name artists to come here, it's got to be attractive because you want their pieces to be seen.
Yes. Well, Detour came and did the, on the asphalt behind the community center, Rock Creek Circle, because I specifically saw that in the Digest and like, or no, the Digest was one on the board at the time, the Sentinel. And I walked down there to talk to him because I just loved his art, but, and obviously it had to get, you know, washed off because it didn't stick, but I saw him and I was like, oh my God, I love your art. So, you know, to get, I mean, artists like that are coming out here, it would be nice to give him a wall where he could actually do his normal art and not, you know, what he did, but, you know.
I think we, I think going back to your point too, it's like, if we can get in alignment with Metro District, then we can start rolling a lot of this forward. They let the door open and then even now, there's still a bunch of questions in terms of coordination, like even the splash, that's a big question mark.
That's, that's coming forward.
Okay, good. But if we can get them to, you know, at least agree in principle, then we can, I think we can leverage the contacts we have at CAPS.
Let's do a festival, give him a stipend.
Yeah, I, I don't know if, if the Metro District really needs to get involved in this at all.
I guess you're right, because it's-
Yeah, I mean, if we're talking about private property owners, I mean, we control the PD and the design guideline enforcement, so, you know, really like, let's not involve Metro District at all.
Yeah, so like origin for the, you know, the walkways to the garages, just talk to them, there's the, or even the medical office building, they got the walkway to that garage as well, like those open faces, Brandon's all wrapped right now, but I think they'd all be on board with it. If someone else is good at painting, of course, there's-
I would, I would suggest, let's, let's, so we've got our CAPS dinner coming up in August.
August.
So like, let's add this as a agenda item for that dinner and see what they think about it, I'm sure they're going to be thrilled. And let's make, to making this happen.
Can I break you real quick? And let's talk about concrete walls, right?
Some brick, some concrete.
Private owners are probably not going to go for brick because paint actually, brick actually weaves and it actually allows humidity to go through, so if you paint it, it seals it and it creates problems with mold and it breaks down the structure of the brick and it basically shortens life cycles, so that could be a problem.
I think most of them are concrete faces.
So that's why I'm saying, concrete, you can do anything you want to, it's perfect, but-
Downtown, there's some brick, like on the corner of, if you're sitting at that park with the little amplifier.
That's true.
If you're sitting at that and looking at that building across, there was a wall that was brick and I was like, that would be great for like a postcard for people to take a picture in front of, type of deal. Can you, can you do something to it to pre-treat it?
Snuggle it.
Well, it depends, oh yeah, snuggle, yeah. Well, it depends, I mean, is that liquid stick brick or liquid stuff? I don't think that's going to make a difference, but if it's real brick, that's, that could be a problem with it. And that's why like on our house in downtown, we lime washed it instead because that allows it to breed where it's painted on.
Because all the ones in Rhino are on brick, so I wonder how they're getting around that, or maybe they just aren't.
They're just older buildings.
They don't care.
They're like, yep.
It's holding it down.
This is keeping this place together. Just, don't wash it off.
It's going to come down.
All right. Anything further on this one? Thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah, and I think CAPS, you know, Drew Vaughn's like texting me, like, they're, they're excited. I mean, this, this is like, they want to do more in downtown, it's just a function of funding and getting alignment with the different organizations, because it's, it takes breakfast in terms of who to talk to. So if we can help break through something, I think it'll help.
Okay, that'd be awesome.
All right, item E, discussion of permanent installation signage about rocky flats at the town-owned parking area south of Coyote Ridge.
Yeah, I stuck this on there. So hopefully everyone did their homework, watched the movie. You know, Jeff, you know, if you watched it, his father unfortunately passed away, you know, because he used to work at Rocky Flats. Drew, or I'm sorry, one of our trolls in town has been posting on my Facebook page criticizing the movie, even though Jeff's father passed away having worked at Rocky Flats. So, you know, it's, it's unfortunate, but, you know, as we all know, Rocky Flats is this super weird secret that no one knows about because we don't talk about it that much. Then, you know, Appleson said in the movie, like, if you have to put signs up around Rocky Flats, we failed. We have failed to educate people on what Rocky Flats is and was. And one of the earlier emails I'd sent out, you know, I think if you think about Manhattan projects and all the, all the sort of museums, signage and everything else that's evident, this is the only one that's got nothing. The only thing it has is Jeff Gregg's horse or the, the horse with the gas mask on it. Cold War horse. Yeah, the war horse. You know, so there's, there's definitely some opportunity, you know, to get some funding for a sign at our parking lot. And then, you know, if we wanted to commission a piece, Gregg would be definitely interested in doing something. I think we could, again, for something like that, I think we could fundraise for it, I don't think it should be taxpayers, but fundamentally, we've all, this community, and the reason why so many come to us is we have fought access to rocky flats for 20 plus years. There's also a misnomer, the Stewardship Council failed because everyone had tired of being eaten anymore. It's because it, right, it's in many ways, it's like the airport noise roundtable. It was not doing what it was supposed to do because in this case DOE wasn't doing what it was supposed to do. So it was bailed. So I think there's some funding available here, but I want to make sure that the board is interested in going down the path of doing this. There's plenty of people that want to help us. Tiffany Hansen and many others that can help us go do this. There's also, you know, we got a lot of emails today just about different things to do, right? Like, is it a library? Is it, you can, again, as part of the US Fish and Wildlife Refuge Project, there was supposed to be money for a library. It was written into congressional law and it was going to get built in Arvada, but they've kind of reapportioned those monies for something else and said that we satisfied this. So there is no future library or museum, but that never got built. So I still want the bike way to not happen. And that's still a work in progress, I think, for all of us to try to contact our two commissioners that are in support of it. But I think fundamentally, you know, given the fights that we have had about access to the flats and the refuge and everything else, and the fact that, you know, people are just woefully uneducated about what, what happened there.
Who's still supporting it?
Clara Marta. I mean, because you just need
You just need one.
Right, because right now it's two, one. Clara Marta with one.
Why? I thought they paused to do community.
So what they, yeah, so what, where the county is right now is access will be granted and there'll be a big radiation sign on the gate leaving Boulder County, you know, little international radiation symbol. That's going to be the warning.
I thought they were getting community input on it still. They've moved past that.
No, no, it's fair. It's, you know, and I don't know where that's at, but at any point they can call a question and for them.
I remember that was their, like, we'll put a sign. And I was like, I do not read signs on my bicycle when I'm driving past something like that's a trail that
It is probably gonna be like
Tells me it's safe because it's open and it's a trail. So that's good to know.
Can I ask, how do people not know? Because Boulder was famous for protesting Rocky Flats almost every weekend for like three years.
It wasn't Boulder. People flew in from everywhere to protest it.
Yeah. So how is there
Time.
Memories are short.
Time. It's so much time has elapsed.
People move into town.
Candellas.
Everybody lives in Candellas.
Somebody I work with lives in Candellas and he rides his bike and he's super excited to ride to our new office. And he's like, through Rocky Flats. And I was like, no, please don't do that. This is why. And he goes, oh, if there's a bike way, I'm sure it's fine. And I'm like, it's not.
And that's the thing, right there.
Exactly.
Like it feels like it's safe because they can't imagine somebody put it there if it wasn't safe.
I just lived in Layton Rock before he was Superior. And I dug up some soil and I said to Kim, this friend of mine, asking all these questions. He's like, stop bothering me. Just don't eat the dirt. You know, I was aware of it. I, I, anywhere I buy a house, I want to make sure everything around me is, you know, especially
You're probably an outlier. I don't think a lot of people are doing that.
I have advised
You know, and then, you know, okay, so like you as a homeowner, you know, you buy, buy a place, but, you know, as a renter, you know, does the homeowner's family know? Do the kids know?
Or somebody who's temporarily
You know, like people moving in, you know, their second homeowners, like, you know, memories are short. And that was one of the things that I think that the Stewardship Council did because regardless of how effective or ineffective it was, it did at least meet regularly about the subject matter and gave, gave people an opportunity to at least like see that it's on random agendas and, you know, they can talk about issues when they're arising. So I, I think, you know, in general, I, I talked about this like years ago, that like before we, we had our Coyote Ridge parcel owned and before we had the parking lot, that like when they were talking about any sort of access point into Superior to put some sort of warning sign, just to notify our residents that are going onto Rocky Flats that there is potential contaminants on that, that property.
Yeah, this is like, this is like safety. You know, you got my boat on this.
Yeah, I mean, there's different, there's warning signs, there's historical markers, there's, there's a lot of what we could do. Because we have the parcel, it's ours, bought it for a dollar. I don't know if there's any prohibition from CDOT of what we can and can't do with the parcel.
At what point do people using those trails and coming over to Marshall and contaminating trails that aren't impacted at this point? Like, at what point does that create a legal situation?
It probably already has.
Because they're going to churn up the dirt, which is where it is. And they're going to have pets and kids and bikes. And they're going to move it all right into our trails because they're all connected.
Well, I mean, from
Can we block them from
From US Fish and Wildlife. From US Fish and Wildlife's perspective, on the portion of Rocky Flats that is the refuge that is open to access, that isn't where the plutonium triggers were manufactured. They were manufactured down in the central operable unit, which is, you know, admittedly, it's, it's further away. And, you know, they're, they're not allowing access onto the central operable unit. But, you know, from the people that are concerned about Rocky Flats, you know, they're, they're concerned about like the cleanup that was done. And basically what the government did is, you know, the government is, the federal government and all governments are not known for bringing projects in like under budget and like on time, right? But the Rocky Flats cleanup came in like enormously under budget and way ahead of time. And then low and behold, like, they're like, oh, we found this, you know, barrel over here. And we found like, you know, so like, it wasn't done in a way that I think satisfied the people that are really like concerned about it. And from the government's perspective, they're just like, you know what? We're just going to close this, this one area that's the real problem and hope everything else is fine. And for the environmentalists out there, they say, you know what? They don't trust the government's cleanup and they don't think that it's worth the risk. And my personal opinion is like, I agree with Jefferson County Schools and Boulder County Schools that they're not allowing field trips onto the flats, onto wildlife fresh refuge. And I just think it's a bad idea to encourage people to be recreating there.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, it looks beautiful. And like, it looks like this is a really nice
Which is growing.
But, you know, yeah, so like, I'm, I'm supportive, I'm supportive of a sign that's going to educate. I'm fine with whether it's historical or just purely from a safety perspective. But I think we should, we should do something. And I'm open to, but it, but it should be effective. Like, you know, it shouldn't be just something that we put up that actually
People take selfies in front of
The whole force with the, I'm like, that just attracts people. Like, if any, that's a photo op and it's kitschy. And to me, if I didn't know the history, I'd be driving by that being like, oh, cool, let's get a picture. And like, this is a fun historical thing that clearly is safe because they just
But, you know, like even, even when they were going through the process of putting the overpass for the trail, there was a, a soil reading that came in. It was like a 264 Pyco Curie reading, like, I don't know how many times, five times with the, the safe, you know, level or the recommended like environmental kind of remediation standard. So they had a positive testing for plutonium. And it came from like the cores that they were drilling just in the area where the trail crossing over Indiana was going to go or did, it is going.
It's already there.
It's already there. So you know, and so for the, the people that, that care about, about public health and safety, they, they think, well, like, if that reading shows elevated levels of plutonium, you know, God only knows like what they dug up when they were actually installing this thing. And it was with the, the construction workers that were, you know, breathing this in without wearing any sort of BPE or anything like that.
And that sample was probably three quarters, if not full mile away from central operating.
Yeah, right.
That's just part
Not in an area where they actually cleaned it up.
Well, we should have some statistics like that or something that are on this, like as recent as, you know, like this is what we found. I don't know. If someone's going to stop and read that, it would be great to read like, this is, we didn't want this to be here. This is why. And you should know this before we run the trail.
And there was, there was litigation to try to stop it, but it was unsuccessful. So it moved forward. And here we are. So I'm, I'm in favor of signage.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't feel like strongly in one way or the other, like what specifically it needs to say. I'm open to anything, but
I would put CAPS in. We do Mr. Burns from The Simpsons with Big Walker sign. And that was
They go to art and
He's got a really evil grin on his face. There you go. That's what you need to know. Stay at the Gator there.
Yeah. Okay, I'll, I'll start working with some of the organizations and see what the funding is out there. And we'll be there every night. Cool. Thanks.
Oh, thank you.
Now, there's a lot of folks that, the emails came in. There's a lot of frustration, I think, in that more communities aren't taking this seriously than we always have. And I think that's why we usually go to Superior. It's just like, that rocket support or preventing anything with Rocky Flats forces. This is what we're talking about. I mean, everyone just forgets.
All right, we're on to item F, which is our regional housing group update.
That's me. Since August of '24, I've been meeting with a regional housing group that the focus is on homelessness and housing. A lot of it is around housing to prevent homelessness. And so we've, we've been meeting every month since then. Some of the recent topics we've been discussing are just federal funding impacts and how to sustain any successful programs that those, that impact housing, think like Boulder County Affordable Housing. And then there's a lot of like wraparound programs that come from the Boulder County Housing, different entities, Housing Authority, Homelessness Focus. We've also been talking about how as municipalities were promoting ADUs. And then also how municipalities are looking at prevention of homelessness. So, you know, people that are housed now and have something happen like a job loss or a big change, and suddenly now they don't have the resources to maintain their stable housing. So one of the things, we got a presentation last week from an organization in Austin that had to do with building basically an affordable housing community that was, it's like, it's right outside of Austin. So still has access to transportation. There, it's like a tiny home community and it has multiple sizes and different needs that would meet the unhoused needs. And so we're as a, as a group, so the intent of this is that if we're all talking to each other and we're looking at regional systems and regional advocacy for, for housing, what, what is the best use of all of us? And so the thing that I wanted to bring to the council to consider, and I don't need a vote, but just kind of your thoughts on that, we're weighing the options of like, do as a, as a housing group, do we focus more on infill? So there's like housing throughout. And that would fall back on something like our commitments to affordable housing individually as municipalities. Or is there interest in a development if there was land secured and a development of a whole, basically some tiny homes, some larger, but a housing community built around bringing people out of homelessness or being a place that's, would catch somebody that's losing, you know, wherever they're at? Is that something that municipalities would want to invest in more than for doing the infill internally in the community? And at first I was like, I didn't really see, I was like, I don't know that Superior would be supportive of the, you know, this, this like, here's a product, we're going to build this thing over here that's going to, but when I started to learn more about and understand how much something like that would capitalize on federal and state funding and organizations that are all about housing, not just in Boulder County, but around the region, I was like, oh, there could be a lot of leverage in actually creating something there. And there's a lot of success in how those look. And then also could take some of the burden off of us as a community in terms of like affordable housing numbers, right? If we're contributing to something. And so I don't know what it's going to look like, but I wanted to just kind of put it on your radar as something to consider that that might be a regional approach to it. And then also, some of the things that we're sharing is the idea of having some kind of ADU curious event, maybe, you know, people that want to know more about like, what is this like? What are the entities that could offer me, you know, plans? Does my property even fit with my municipality's expectations? And then also conversion plans. Some of the questions we've been discussing are, you know, what are municipalities doing to promote ADUs? What are we doing to promote the idea of converting basements? Like, how are we looking at other ways to create housing in our community that isn't taking a piece of land and building a house? And we've, we've, we were, I don't, I think this was fire related, but we were way, we were way ahead. Most people are just now coming into compliance with their ADU ordinance because it was just, I think
Just last year.
Yeah. So we, we were way ahead on that one, which was great and doesn't happen all the time in the regional conversation about housing from Superior. But, but where I felt like we were lacking was, well, we did it, but we don't talk about it. And we don't have any education for the community about, you know, the ADU curious people. And, and the basement conversion, which I, I think I heard first from, from you, Jason, such a great idea and such an answer to what our housing needs assessment feedback was in terms of like senior housing or, you know, main level, you know, access. So there's not stairs. And so I think we could do better at being proactive about providing those. But what this group is working on is like, how do we share what each other's doing so that it's not so hard for someone to be like, oh, we have to figure all this out and create it. And then also, are there mechanisms to fund conversions? I know because budget work, like that money has to come from somewhere. And at this point, we don't have it. But is it something that we can look at as building out part of, you know, budgeting in the next five to 10 years of creating some sort of resource for people that want to do a conversion under, you know, terms of providing, like, you're either going to live in it or someone's going to live in it. So there's attachments to not just a profit driving piece for them.
But before you go too far, I mean, there's things that we have available to us that don't cost a lot. Like we can discount permit fees.
Yeah.
They're not a bunch of permit fees for basement conversions in the budget. So if we're able to cut 20, 30% off of that.
Yeah. So some ways to look at like, how do we incentivize it? Not just say like, you're allowed to.
Right.
But are we actively promoting these things and incentivizing it for the community?
And if you're going to get this permit, discounted permit fee, you can't turn it into an Airbnb.
Right.
It has to be.
Right.
Can we utilize this like funding? Can we use this to purchase land in pursuit of that?
Well, I think that would be like, we could decide to do whatever we want to do.
Because if we're out of land, and we're pretty much out of land, I think Northwest Quarter pushing the Boulder, getting incorporated Boulder County land, they'd sell it to us and then developing that as a middle income or middle, missing middle or affordable housing would be an opportunity. Because we can't make some areas change with the owner wants to do or resolutes.
They want to do housing in areas still.
Is that?
They want to do
Yeah, but they don't want to do affordable housing, right? Yeah. So
But they have to though, right? Or fee and
Just the 15%.
Yeah.
Which they were in support of la- last time.
I mean, where are they going to go anywhere around here and build anything that doesn't have affordable requirements?
They just wanted housing. We kept saying commercial. So that was the, the affordable housing number was not even a discussion point. It was RACs, OD, C's. I think it's RAC versus
Also, other creative things too. I mean, I think I mentioned this before, do what Denver does with infill lots, take it to put a lot cut in half. Now you still have what could qualify as residential low density, but you have two houses on one lot. Now you basically have higher density in a lower density situation. But is that something that we can sell in the community, especially if somebody owns a lot? You know, rather than just selling one lot, maybe cut it in half, you might make a little bit more money by selling two smaller lots. But no, it's, I've, I've, I've tried to think how you get, think to solve it. It's just a myriad of things. And I don't know. I mean, after the fire, we've been great at Boulder County. You convince it's okay. You know, one thing I pitched was, why don't you pay for the ADUs over here? And then it's going to be perpetually, it's going to be affordable housing. And then the homeowner will just get whatever the rental fee is and it's always going to be affordable. Whoever buys a lot. And he was like, no, I think you guys wanted affordable housing. But they don't want it that way. So I don't know. It's, yes. I plugged your effort on this. I
I think because I want to clarify, because like the city, so it's like Lyons, Longmont, Erie, or not Arvada. Who else? Louisville, Lafayette.
Eastport.
Yeah. But so it's not really, like, I think sometimes our affordable conversations get into, you know, we are feeling pressure from the push of the unaffordability of Boulder city proper. And, but all the cities around are also dealing with this, right? And so we can have the, like, if Boulder just did this, then it would be improved. But they're not going to, right? Like, we know they're not. So I appreciate this group because it's looking at like, okay, given the situation that we're in, like, how do we maximize our voice so that it's not just little Superior or little Louisville or little Lafayette trying to figure out these things? But we all have agreed to meet a goal. And so if no one's getting a lot of traction on that, how do we, you know, think about this differently? And so just recently, the thing that came up the most was the consideration of like, do we want to try to have some affordable community basically on land, you know? And then we got into all the conversations. And then we got into all the conversations, well, who's going to buy the land and who's going, you know? But it's, and Marta, she's the one who, as the supervisor on this task runs this group. I think it just, it got stopped immediately, like, just go back to your communities and see how they even feel about this before we start going down this lane. And so I just wanted to bring it to you, kind of give you an update on all the things that we've been discussing. There will be ADU plan sharing, there will be conversion ideas, there's, there's a lot of information sharing that'll happen that I'll make sure to bring back. But I think as a group, we want to look at some intentional, like, do we want to be advocating for infill or do we want to be advocating for something else? Or both, which I think would be difficult. I think it would be better outcomes if it was, the focus was on one or the other, but just getting your thoughts, because I'm out there representing Superior and I don't want to just say stuff by myself.
You think like me?
No, I, I, that was kind of my, so like you said before, sitting and talking to people about running for office was more the regional approach. I mean, that's, Matt knows me well enough, that's kind of how the chamber grew.
Yeah.
Was more a regional draw. We have a great community, so even if the houses were not right here, hopefully we could still attract them with businesses and programs. So I would love to see some regional, you know, input on that and having you at that seat is appreciated.
I know the Rock Creek Gage always probably going to have a hand in this, but aside from this basement, what, you know, you see these, these Swedish type modular 400 square foot homes, could they put them in the backyards of the homes in Rock Creek and call that an ADU or call it secondary housing?
Or above garage or adjacent garage, like there's a, or convert garage. Like, there's a lot of things you can do to make an ADU on a house, but the HOA.
The HOA, yeah.
Restrictions limit it pretty, pretty heavily.
Yeah. And then over here, all the developers are really, I mean, they're buying up all the lots and they're charging at least 600,000 for a lot. They're not going to put anything less than a one and a half, $200 house on it. So these are going to weigh in. Sagamore's too small to do anything on it.
Yeah, that was, that was the, that was the enthusiastic, like, our ADU stuff was done in like 2022. And then they're like, how many affordable units? And I was like, zero.
Zero.
Like, those were all for profit. Those were, most of them were for fire survivors to like get into and then be able to afford a second mortgage that they were never planning to have. And so it's a little different. But yeah, there's, that was, I don't know what, you know, it's going to look like for us, but.
I like the idea of a, a regional approach and a community around it where it's still on transit. Because I'm in a, a group that's predominantly in Boulder, but I know a developer that specifically focuses on affordable projects and not just affordable, but also like getting people out of homelessness. And so he did a project, you've probably driven by and never noticed it, but the Barnes and Noble that's on Pearl and 30th, it's just on that block north of that, kind of behind that little shopping area with that bicycle bar thing, I can't remember what that's called. It's a really nice unit. And so they, they were immediately filled as soon as they went live. And they went to, on off seasons, not, you know, the warmer months where homeless come here and, and, you know, fill up older, but they went out and surveyed the homeless population during the colder months to make sure they were homeless and were here and not just transient. But they were filled immediately. And in addition to the housing, because they want them to succeed in getting out of homelessness, it wasn't just providing them housing, but it's also programming, counseling.
Yeah, the reference, like services for them.
It's like one gentleman, because he lived under an underpass for years and years and years, wasn't used to a bed. And so he kept sleeping on the ground. And the counselor was like, you know, you can't, you've got to get used to sleeping in a bed and getting back in society. And so they took him to the underpass and he got to pick one thing. And so he brought this branch back to sleep in bed with him until he no longer needed that. And so things like that to just like tease them in. I love the idea of a community around that where you have somebody just coming out of homelessness and then you've got kind of this step up to the, you know, maybe people who are trying to avoid homelessness or they've now graduated from that into, you know, affordable units, because these units are totally free. But the point being that there's a ton of grant funding around that, or at least there was, I don't know if there's still going to be, but they would be a good asset for you to, like, they, they just know a ton around that and that's all they do. So that might be helpful to, in building the community around it.
This is kind of part B of this is we also, we didn't get to it in the meeting, but the Boulder County Housing Department was like, funding's been like cut in like half. And they're, they're basically like, we are just preparing for there to be a lot more unmet needs and services not being able to be provided. So just a heads up for communities in the secondary area, like if there's going to be impacts that come from that. One of the cool things about the community piece of the affordable housing community is that they were able to build units where there was a shared kitchen. It was almost like pods, so it was, and, and in the, in the unhoused community, a lot of them are together in groups, right? And then maybe one person gets housing, but they don't want to leave the four people that they're in a group with. And so it's a solution to, okay, well, everybody's going to go and everybody has a room, but you all have a shared kitchen. And, and so there's, there's like a community transition versus like pulling people out of what might not look to us that are not unhoused as like a functioning, like cohesive like unit there. And so the intent is like, people are more likely to transition to those housing units if they get to stay with the people that they're in partnership with. So that's been, they stay in it longer and they move through those phases of evolving into whatever it's going to look like for them to transition to be housed. So there's a lot of benefits to that community piece of it instead of isolated individual. And then they're looking, I think they changed, I don't know if they just did this in Austin or are they doing it here? Or if it's, I think it's coming, it's not done yet, but that like the housing vouchers before can only be used for like a whole rentable space. Like a, if it was a three bedroom, like you got the whole thing. And now they're changing it where people can have rooms, which allows those groups to stay together in a house. And so those also create more options for people to rent out a room instead of having to rent the whole house. And so they're playing around with things to try to create more solutions. And a lot of it requires like waivers from HUD, from how they traditionally did things to how they're doing them now. But they're getting creative, but it's never enough. You guys have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I was going to say, this is not regional to Boulder at all. Like, I swear, Dr. Cog used to be transportation. It is like transportation housing, 99% of what we talked about. Because every Denver metro area community, doesn't matter how small, you know, like Fox something, they're like, I don't know, 500 people, they got a housing room. So it's, and I, I'm going to be, it's like, you gotta try everything. I don't know that, you know, this or that is going to work. North Glenn's my, my favorite example. It's six square miles, it's slightly bigger than us. They're 35,000 people. It's all about infill, right? Because there's not, you know, large pieces of land, right? It's infill.
Yeah.
And if you imagine, you know, just that number of Superior, it would be a very different community. But that's how you try to solve the problem. So I'm all for infill. I, I think it's probably a heavier lift because of Rock Creek and what we have to do to the PD and stuff like that. Maybe that's something we need to start thinking seriously about. Because, you know, Colorado Sun today, there's a big article about the problem we're having with senior housing stabilized, right? Because people are aging in place, they can't afford to move, but they can't deal with stairs. You know, there's so many things wrong with where we're at right now and our schools, two schools are looking at declining enrollment because my parents are the reason, right? Because they're literally, they can see the school, but they don't want to downsize from a five bedroom home because they get in the same problem. And the stairs are already starting to come apart. So those are the kinds of things, like, you know, there's opportunities here and we do need to start those conversations with the HOA. Because if we don't start somewhere.
Really? Can they meet with us? Kind of like conversation with the HOA.
Or your parents.
There's like a commission on aging and I think they said like by 2030, it's like 200% increase in seniors.
Yeah, no, I mean, Colorado Sun, just pull it up because they got the stats. It's obviously the fastest growing, you know, which we all know, but it's, it's becoming a huge problem for the state and for each of these communities.
People are living longer, they're not dying in 65, 70, they're going to 89. And they want to stay in their house and that causes a lot of issues with falls and instabilities. I mean, that's kind of why I brought that up earlier tonight, was that, you know, it's such a tricky issue here, right? We've got, we've got a community that wants certain things and we've got needs for the community members and we've got older populations that are growing. What do we do with them? Do we tell them, sorry, we can't build housing, we can't do rental plans, you got to go somewhere else? You know, there's got to be something we've got to be able to do because we do still have land available that we can, that we can develop. You know, so it is, it is a conversation that needs to be had because the same, the same target that we talked about affordable housing, even when we're in the planning commission, we talked about affordable housing, the need for affordable housing, but then we want it. And on top of the affordable housing need, you know, it's, it's attainable housing. How do you make the argument more palatable? It's an 80% AMI, because 80% AMI here is 100% Dallas County. So you're not really creating affordable housing. It's, it's a tough sticking issue because the one thing in the back of my mind, I'm always thinking taxes and maybe it's because, you know, coming from downtown, we pay so much more in taxes than everybody else does. But if we keep gentrifying to a staggering extent, we are going to become Aspen without Aspen's industry to support itself. And we're going to have massive, massive debt, we're going to have massive, you know, taxes for people and we're only going to have to start building bigger and bigger homes to be able to supply. Where do we stop that? It's, it's, we're going to eat ourselves, it's basically like the, I don't know, we're all we're setting in when it comes to these types of things because we need to do something, everybody needs to do something with their communities because it's not going to get better by itself. We have to do things to jump the cycle again and get younger people in with kids to populate the schools. And how do you maybe do that? You have, parents take the ranch plans, they sell or give the houses to their kids. Now they get generational wealth, now the kids are back in the schools. I mean, I don't know, it's, it's, it's a tough, tough issue. I really do, John, applaud you trying to take this because it's not easy and there's no easy solution on it. But there's a lot of tough conversations we're going to have to have, I think, going forward with this, with community members in general about where we go as a direction in the town. There's no easy just leave it alone the way it is, we like it, it's going to change. We have to be forced to admit that. So sorry to be killed, Jared.
I think we should be doing everything possible to make it easier for people to build senior housing, affordable housing in town. We've got a need for both of those, I think. Infill opportunities in like ADUs in already developed areas are fine and should be part of the solution. But I think the, the way to really move the needle is, you know, on like large lots that don't have, you know, that are developable, whether they're currently parking lots or undeveloped ground. You know, that's, that's the opportunity area for new housing, denser housing, more affordable housing. You know, I, I'm fully convinced that, you know, the schools are going to continue to suffer because the people can't afford to, to move in here and raise a family. I think, you know, everybody's already said seniors is obviously a growing demographic and we don't have housing for them. And we just don't have diverse housing stock here in town. So we're not, we're not going to solve the, the problem. You know, we're four square miles and a relatively small community, but I think there are some opportunity areas that could be developed upon and could be part of that overall regional plan.
Boulder Valley School District owns the land that the schools are on?
Yes. It's the both, isn't it?
Well, there's two elementary schools and one of them is elementary middle school and then there's a middle school, high school in one area. So I just, I, I know that discussions have been, you know, the low enrollment. And if you looked at this community and the size of it and the amount of people, you'd be like, you have two elementary schools? Like, why do you have two elementary schools?
I mean, we used to have trailers.
I know.
Trailers at both schools because they're bursting in seams.
I've heard about that. So.
That was like 10 years ago. When I got on the board, we still had trailers at both schools.
Yeah, my kid, kid's kindergarten was.
Yeah. And, you know, they did a bond measure to expand ELDO.
Yeah.
That's right.
Like within the past 10 years. And they built that second wing on to where they have the preschool now and, and, you know, the, just the extension of like the eighth graders are over there, so.
If they did close one of the schools, what would they do with the?
Consolidate with the other schools.
Facility and the land.
Yeah, we, that's, that's.
Like what happens?
That's their asset management question.
Jefferson County's closed some schools, like my old elementary school in Arvada's now closed. They're just sitting on it and they're renting it out for like after school care and stuff like that. They're using it as a facility, but they're not using it to teach.
As school.
Yeah, I think churches are using something too.
Churches use it on the weekends.
Yeah.
What we're talking about too is could be number four, we need to change the zoning code. So when Matt and I were in Vegas, we talked, there's a Marriott. I brought, I brought the idea, if you guys want to put a hotel, maybe the five, the top five stories could be bought units. And they actually liked the idea. So how do we sell the town on starting to a vertical now? You know, because if you look at Monaco, for example, that's basically our size and they've got 30,000 people.
Dude, we just gained an F1 race.
You and me are going to put this together, you know? Right around downtown.
They're already doing it on 36.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, you got the diverging diamond awesome for racing. No stoplights.
I mean, there are different things we can do that's rather than be more hurried a lot, but.
Get together, you're like, what are we doing? I'm done, I don't have.
All right, let's move on to item G. This is just an update. I asked Matt to put this on here, Rock Creek Defense Landscape Fee Timeline for Decision Closure. Just, what's our ETA for the rate study and?
Yeah, it's not complete yet. We hooked out in the next few weeks and then we'll get it in front of the council for a presentation.
Matt?
Either that first meeting in July, that might be a little tight, so August is probably.
All right, but before we adopt the budget and set the fee schedule, we will have a decision guidance, all the things.
I heard a couple of people ask me, so I want to ask you, are we getting the price that it's going to cost for these fences? Are we getting an overall either per mill foot or wholesale?
Well, the direction we have from the council was no maintenance, just paint.
Just paint, okay.
Just paint.
And not replacing.
And are we, we're getting a per mill foot or whatever that is on that, right?
Oh, paint?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Look forward to seeing that. Hopefully never talking about this again.
Oh, no. Woo wee.
There might be a HOA meeting about it at some point.
Not with us, though.
No, exactly.
We're not allowed.
And we were notified, just as a side note, by the HOA that they were not going to fund any additional locations for holiday light this season. But might consider for next season.
Did they say that last part or is that just a thought?
They did.
Okay. I just want to make sure. They clarified no for this season and that was just inference or? Okay.
They basically set the budget.
They probably, yeah. They probably didn't have a budget for it.
Standing update, Matt?
Yeah, construction started on the, you know, Rock Creek Parkway because of the intersection. Rush hour gets backed up at times.
And it's kind of wild to see that.
Yeah.
And so that's a four way stop right now?
No, the traffic light went out. They, they accidentally cut the line.
Okay.
So it's working again, so.
It wasn't working when I came back.
No, it wasn't working. There was a guy stopping people.
He was not happy with his job.
I waved at him that.
So that's.
You always waved at him?
You saw the digestive dig on the Indian 288th Street. So it's going to be delayed. Brandon's on vacation, but he'll get an update to the council probably in the July meeting. Probably put it out next February, March and start construction.
So do we think that the previous direction about doing a mill and overlay would be sufficient that, that we're going to have to be full depth reconstruction?
That's one of the options. The other one is where they mix the asphalt with some materials and that creates a new base. So there's two options. We've done that in the past.
But regardless, the estimated price is going up. So we were at like 2.6.
Yeah, the middle option's around $4 million. The upper, full reconstruction is six, five to six.
Do they have the same amount of useful life or is the middle ground option not as long?
I don't know that. Brandon.
Since we're clearly pointing this to 2026, one thing to consider when we talk about the budget is including the landscaping. Medium landscaping, because I think there wasn't, it wasn't contemplated in the near-term budget.
And the plan is to do that separate from the loan project. You'll see a recommendation for the CMGC contract for the north pool on Monday with, trying to get construction started August, a minute to late on this.
And so in terms of what we're gonna see on Monday, that this is a contract to approve the GC. But they're gonna design it.
Right.
So then we're gonna see a design sometime in July?
Yes.
And do we think that they have enough time to pull that off?
It could be the first meeting in August.
You slipped a lot.
But they'll already be part of the, they're hitting the ground running, you know, so.
Wasn't there some like feedback from Park that?
They sent, they sent the council a list of recommendations.
Okay, that's what I'm remembering.
That went to the consultant, which hopefully is also getting forwarded on to.
I processed that years ago, so.
And then Aces, BRS met with Aces on Wednesday or Thursday last week and a whole slew of ideas. So BRS is trying to incorporate that.
Well, I mean, my, my, my thinking on, just so this isn't coming as a surprise to anybody. I appreciate that we are keeping our foot on the gas and trying to get this thing done like this year. But I also want us to be like realistic about it and like I don't wanna rush a bad design. Right, so like if we get to the point where we're like, we don't feel good about this design and we can get it done this year and then we can open up and everybody's gonna hate it, that would be a mistake. So I would much rather like be diligent. I mean, so we're keeping our foot on the gas and we're proceeding that we can get this open for next season. But I don't want to just be quick and not be good.
So if it gets to a point where we don't obviously wanna be quick and bad, do we push it to the following year? So we're not gonna be out for a pool season?
Yeah, we're not gonna have a pool closed for the entire season.
Okay, good. That's good, yeah, that's great. I think that's, residents would appreciate that.
If you put it the right way, they're never gonna remember it was closed from there. They lost it one year.
Well, but they're not gonna lose a year.
But I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't done for them for that year. They're gonna completely have no memory of that, they're gonna love the new pool, that's what you want. Like Jen said, if we rush it, screw it up, they're never gonna forget about it.
They'll name the pool after us.
But, I mean, but at the same time, like, like Jen was saying about our job here like is to make decisions. Like this is a big project and a really important one. And if the contract is good and the, the design is good, like we have to feel like confident and, you know, decisive enough to just be like, yes, we're going forward and there'll be some people who don't like it.
We'll know. If we feel that way, we'll know.
I think, yeah, I think it's been great that we have been as aggressive as we have to try to move as quickly as possible. But I just want everybody to know that we do have an out in the event of we really don't feel good about this. But hopefully we'll feel great about it and we can move forward with it.
I also feel like we will hear about it if they don't feel good about it.
Well, I would, I would, I would hope that we will.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Not after the decision's made.
No, I mean, sometimes I'm surprised at the things that we don't hear about. There's sometimes it's just like, you know, you hear about it after the fact, but not like at the point in time where like it would have been actually beneficial to hear from people.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, good, a great job of bonds, I mean, almost even 17 million in 4.8.
So money's ready to be spent.
Now it's earning interest.
It already is spent, what do you mean?
Construction started on Block Eight in downtown Superior. No update on Big B, still working on that, still hopeful.
I texted with him a little bit today, he's, he's, he's still moving forward. There's no change in his, I'm trying to nail him down for a drink. He wants to tour my house, I'm trying to blackmail him to that.
Then she's up until Friday.
I saw him on Thursday.
I want to.
Everybody with a kid is crammed for that.
No update on that.
You know, if we have any chance of Bill coming in and talking on Monday or in the future?
What?
No.
Blocks 25.
The med sciences, at least.
Yeah, what, how's the pre-lease going?
Well, you can talk to most recently, I think.
You talked, you talked to Bill?
I talked to him, he was at the groundbreaking for Block Eight. And so basically what he said is interest rates are really high. And so that's just putting a damper on all new investment in general. It is, yeah. It's, it's, it's too high relative to where they were a year or two ago. And then the life sciences field is feeling the impacts of the administration's defunding of universities and all of, and science. And frankly, so like the money that was kind of available in that field and kind of getting people to like invest in life sciences is skittish going elsewhere. So they're pivoting to the extent that they can look in other, other industries.
Do we know what they're pivoting to yet?
I mean, he said he was meeting with a quantum company, so, but that's, that's kind of the latest. So my, my, what I took away from that, from that meeting is like, I am not going to carry any chickens and I, I think it'll get built sometime, but not anytime soon.
I appreciated your reminder recently, I heard you say this. And I don't think I really knew it, but the scope of how long this was supposed to take and where we're at. Because I think it's helpful for people to understand that. Because sometimes these things feel like they're like a hangup and it should be done. But we're way ahead actually of schedule compared to like what this was supposed to look like. So I'm just trying to feel better about this.
Also, you know, Redtail Ridge, to the extent that there's gonna be a new hospital and, you know, that is competition for what they're doing. So, you know, the, the, the good aspect of it is they could be up and running way faster than anything from Redtail Ridge is going to be up and running. But if and when that starts getting built, you know, it's gonna be something to compete with.
I remember like 2028, what you said? For Vista, for the hospital? I spoke with the.
They could be.
I spoke with her at the Chamber event and I thought like 2030 and she was like, wow. So I was like, 20?
They're thinking they can do 2020.
Yeah.
They still have some approvals to get through city council, so they're not fully entitled.
Mark, I appreciate your being the bearer of the news, but I'm calling bullshit on Apple, med sciences now. There is, there is venture capitalists with money and companies, and I've been saying this to Bill Jenkins in the beginning. You don't lease out the buildings because that's not the nature of med sciences. Med sciences happen overnight, companies get bought up, you get pair of office and other companies that need spaces overnight. So if that team was built, it would be full right now. I'm gonna help.
Maybe, I mean, what I mean, hopefully it's.
It would be fine and we'd be.
Yeah, not our money to put into it. You know, like they're the ones that would need to build it for SPAC and.
Yeah, that's from building for SPAC though, this is a long industry to build for SPAC. You build it and people move into it, so. I'm just flagging it, it's a, what's his ass on it?
Yeah, the flip side is like I, I don't think that they just wanna own that dirt and not approve it, right? Like they don't wanna just pay taxes on unapproved land and, and not realize, you know, the return that they're counting on. But, you know, part of it is like there's, there's times in real estate development where they go into like a little wait and see mode. You know, my, I mean, I think my, my personal, first of all, on all this is Jerome Powell's got one more year in his term and then there's gonna be a new Fed chair come next summer. And that Fed chair is going to be very, very much more aggressive on lowering rates.
And inflation will happen.
Yeah, but, but it'll juice the economy.
That may as well.
For sure.
And so like I think the people that are looking at big projects are like, you know, I could wait a year. Like right now there's some uncertainty. Like why not just wait a year?
No, there's a, there's a lot of money on the side project right now.
I've got a customer that was, I was talking to him about constructing on a commercial lot and he just pulled the plug completely. He's like, I'm just probably gonna sell the lot because rates are too high and can't make it work and so.
All the residential buyers are holding right now too.
No, I was in, I was in New York last week, I'm going to New York another week. This, there's a ton of capitalists just sort of like, we're gonna wait. Because, I mean, the interest rates are high right now, there's a lot of very sealed places to go. Real estate's not one.
You could park it someplace and earn, you know, 5% to 7% with no risk.
And you won't get fired.
Yeah. For a year, so.
And play the, what is he gonna say today game?
All right, carry on.
Council Liaison Spence identified for economic development areas. Ellen just started, so a couple of these economic things will be scheduled for.
Oh, can we just go back for a second to the, the Main Street leases?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
What is Lily Ray Flowers, Happily Ever After, Inanna Creations?
I'm not sure about those.
Are these sign leases?
Or is that one store that caused the rupture? And all these live workerys?
They're all live.
They all live workerys.
So that's, that's in the space that now is bare hair removal, right?
What? Wait, what?
Happily Ever After?
That space, yeah.
Thing. And bare hair removal, I've never seen open, right? As if they have a sign on the door.
Right.
It's always.
It's for bears?
Well, that is, you know, the bears.
That's a great logo.
I'll, I'll double check on that.
Yeah, Ropet, I've been in, but I've only seen it open once.
Yeah, how's that working on sort of enforcing the hours for the work?
That's a zoning violation.
But are we, yeah, how are we telling the district Carmel, Origin?
It's just Carmel, Oregon.
Yeah, like, are we literally citing them?
We have talked to them about this requirement, so it's up to them to ensure whoever they're leasing to, we need this requirement.
Are they the ones that enforce it? Or is it us? Do we enforce that or do they? If they're violating it?
It's their lease, but we'll cite Carmel and Oregon.
Are we starting to do that?
We haven't yet, because how, well, Quasimodo's closed down. But we will, because it's a year. It's a number of hours in a year.
Right, but in the first three weeks, you're gonna know if they're on track or not. We're open two days a week.
Yeah, not. Well, even Wednesday will be interesting, right? Because even if I'm an individual business owner, knowing that Wednesday's gonna be flooded with people on Main Street, why wouldn't I make concessions to be open? So I think it'll be interesting on Wednesday to see what we see.
I wonder if the Chambers advert is not, all the businesses for that event is happening? Some people, you think they pay attention, but some people don't.
Inanna Creations, what's that?
Is that the one you went to?
Oh, it is. Inos, it's a, it's a rug, sort of.
The rug we, or she's gonna do classes?
Yes, she's gonna do classes. It's a gathering space for like traditional Inonian, like rug making.
Yeah, talk through this.
Because she's in the further block, she's like the first one in that.
She's gonna do a soft opening Wednesday.
She'll be the first one.
And, and this flower, there's a flower shop, huh?
Yeah, Ellen added these on Friday, so I've had a chance to talk to her.
Okay. And Happily Ever After, we think that was the, the sex shop? I thought that was Dr. Libido or something like that, libido doctor.
That's a field here.
That's exactly what it was.
It is. They changed the name maybe, but that's what I was told.
All right. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious because a lot of these don't look familiar.
I have, but I'll get with Ellen and I think Mark should go and check it out.
I mean, I will if they were open. I would buy something from all of them. I support all the businesses, right?
Yeah.
I can't wait for that Facebook post.
Oh, believe me, it's coming. But I just need the opportunity. I need an open door to walk through. Okay.
Good question.
We had the discussion of economic development strategies at the March 3rd and April 7th work sessions. Ellen is four weeks in, so she's already got ideas of a way to improve things, website, information, stuff like that, so.
Can we get her on a town council agenda so she can just come introduce herself to the council and give a update on what she sees, what she's looking forward to?
And how we can help?
Yes, for sure. Budget, had the overview at the April 7th work session. Jeff created the one-page budget summary. He's also looking at ways to improve, continue to improve, easier ways for the public to understand the budget, give them follow-up.
I saw that Facebook post about how much does a streetlight cost? I thought that was fun. Of course, there's snarky comments about us wasting money, but I thought it was.
Yes, we're gonna start doing more of that.
Just means that certain persons could keep tagging Mark.
You should turn that off.
Well, it's the town's postings. And then certain individual tags, Mark and I habitually.
I mean, turn off the tagging of yourself.
I guess delete my Facebook.
That's strange, people you're not friends with don't tag you, like, no. Lock it up.
But, you know, at the end of the day.
It's your trustee page, though, right?
It won't prevent them from seeing your page, it just means they can't tag you and stuff and be like.
The good thing is it's creating engagement, you know, we're gonna get the snarky comments anyways.
Snarky inaccurate comments.
I was like, can I get through this, please?
Continuing to focus on senior activities and programs. We had a presentation on, from EMS at the April 28th council meeting, which was good, I thought. And then where staffs continue to look at housing, ways we can help with the affordability and stuff like that. That'll be presented in a future council meeting. And then home rule charter, I think we implemented everything we need to implement as far as the charter.
Checking off the list, now done.
Before we get too far away from economic development, I met with Renee and a consultant that does large-scale signage, electric signage, like basically think like 10 by 10, 20 by 20 screens on buildings and standalone buildings. And I told him, we're kinda looking for, because I wanna try to capture as much traffic coming out of Boulder and coming up the turnpike on our side before we hit Sundance to try to drive businesses down here. Because I had a meeting with an individual who's putting a business on the street in Louisville. And it would have been amazing, it would have been in a commercial spot. And the woman said, I had no idea you had Main Street in downtown. Was the reason why she didn't look at us. So I don't know what the cost or the new fees, it might be substantially high, but I'd like to at least have a discussion and maybe bring this person in in the future to talk about what we could possibly do and manifest some sort of, you know, get, get people interested, get people repeatedly knowing that we do have a downtown core, we do have restaurants and things so that we can drive people towards us rather than watching them go to Louisville or Lafayette or then you build up in Louisville and maybe you move all up there. So that'll probably be coming in a, in a month or so.
Ranch did propose a, I think it's a tall sign board, which.
But then they've also.
And the community was like, yes.
Well, they're like, well, it's behind the medical office building garage, no one will see it.
I talked to a guy, he's like, that's actually a perfect spot. Put it right on the thing.
I was against it then, but now it's like, how the hell do you get people to know? Because it's hidden behind everything.
Yeah, so there's a couple of locations we talked about, but, I mean, I'd rather us push it forward instead of waiting for Ranch Capital to do anything because I'm not.
Well, Ranch brought it as a concept and we kind of just said, I mean, more than times we said no, like because of the size. And, you know, then there's a question of like, how does it illuminate all the homes in Louisville? Because they're the ones that actually see it more than anybody in Superior, so.
Right.
It is, but I think at the time, maybe, this is probably like six years ago, I think at the time. at the time, we just sort of believed that downtown people would just find it.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, you recall those conversations, they're sort of like, is it in your job, Ranch?